The Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, dear Father, which one have we bow hails before thee? This city council meeting. Grateful, Hymie Father, for this beautiful land that we live in. We're grateful, Hymie Father, for the freedom which we enjoy. And we're grateful, Father, for this city that we have. And we're also grateful for our policemen, and also fighter fighters, first responders. Grateful, Father, for them. And also grateful for our city leaders and for the time and effort that they put into this community. And we ask thee, Father, that we continue to support them and do the things, pray that they will make the right decision for community. Again, we're grateful for everything we have. And again, we close in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, I'm gonna just explain a couple of things for those of you who have not been to a city council meeting, just so that you can kind of understand how the process goes. In the beginning of the meetings, we have a time, and it's called "Public Comment." And so the purpose of "Public Comment" is to allow residents to come up and speak. You get three minutes per speaker, and there's a maximum of five speakers. And you can speak about whatever you'd like to speak about. Now, realizing this is the first city council meeting for maybe most of you or some of you, we don't have anyone signed up to speak right now. I would assume that a lot of you are here to speak, perhaps about the Westgate subdivision, maybe. So if there's anyone that wanted to speak about this, that didn't have a chance to speak to the action item, it's out of order, and we don't normally allow this, but I want you to have the opportunity. So if there are five people that would like to speak about anything regarding the city, please raise your hand. And if you're okay not speaking, that's fine, too. Okay, come on up. Will you please state your name for us? You'll have three minutes, and then the microphone will die.
Is it okay if I hand out something?
You sure can. Okay, thank you. Okay, there you go.
So my name is Ed Davis, and I just walked in a little late, so I didn't get on the sign-up sheet.
Okay.
So I just wanted to speak for a few minutes about the commercial development in the Westgate area. I think there's gonna be some others later who have signed up to speak. But I live on the map that I just, or the aerial photograph I just gave you, in the house circled in red. And I think you're gonna be hearing more about this a little bit later on. But my concern is that I think what's happened with this commercial site, I've learned a little bit about the history of it, it's been there for years, maybe even over a decade. And my concern is that there's a perfect storm happening right now where an elementary school's been built, a residential neighborhood's been built, and a freeway is now being built, which I personally am happy for, because I'll be able to use it. We moved into the neighborhood a little over a year ago, well, it was a year ago, July. And I knew that this was gonna be a commercial site. I am a real estate developer, in part, in my background, so I understand the process. I also served on the Summit County Planning Commission for a few years. So I know the process that this is going through, and has already probably been through. But I think some things are happening more contemporarily that we're not taking into consideration over a longer period of time. This is, I think, has come together, and that's why I refer to it as a "perfect storm." And what's happening, I think, is with the presence of an elementary school, with the presence of a residential neighborhood, and now a high-volume, traffic-volume, commercial site with the "come and go" being proposed. I think, from what I've read, it will generate around 2,000-plus ingress and egress vehicles every day in order for that to be really successful. It's right next to a residential property. What's added insult to injury, and I may be stepping on some of our other presenters' toes a little bit, but UDOT won't allow ingress and egress off of 200 North. I think you may be aware of that. They're forcing all of that 2,000 cars of traffic into their, the commercial site, and through, or onto, a residential street. You'll find, later on, you're gonna hear a lot more about the details of some of this, and the risks that are involved, the concerns of safety that will be mentioned. And I don't wanna take any more time, other than just to say that if you wanna glance at the next two pages of photographs, you can see the elementary school, its proximity to the intersection. There's currently not planned any traffic controlled lights at that intersection. That is a concern. I guess, and then the next one gives you an idea. Clear up the street on Havenwood where the light is possibly supposed to go.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Your time's up, but thank you, thank you so much for your information. Thank you. Appreciate it.
There's two left here, if you want one.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Adams, will you pass one of those down to Ms. Frohmeyer, so she can get it for the record?
Would anyone else like to participate in our "Public Comment" section? No? Okay. Oh, good, okay. Please state your name, even though we know you.
My name is Lorraine Starky.
Here we go.
Lorraine Starky, I live at 573 South, 350 East, Caseville. And I just wanna, first of all, thank the council for considering saving our library. I did not know until about 20 minutes ago that this street was the way to get to Idaho 50 years ago, and that this particular area and building was, and is, a very historic and tender memorial for those that have lived here a long time. And so I don't have an answer, and I don't have a proposal, but I want to encourage the council, as they consider possibilities, that they may have some residents that have a long-time history with Caseville that will be very dependent on your choice for this historic building, and that I encourage you to consider keeping it historic. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Come on up.
My name is Stephen Lynch, I live at 2340 West Island Drive.
Will you repeat your name?
Steven Lynch.
Okay.
So I just wanted to, I'm gonna be like, super quick. I just wanted to, you know, talk a little bit about the proposed, like, "Come and Go." I mean, I moved away from the city, you know, about, in 2016, and now it kinda seems like the city is coming to me. And I was, you know, doing my best to get away from it. I mean, I don't think I need to, like, go over, like, you know, the health risks that are associated with a gas station that is gonna be so, in such close proximity to our children, to the school, you know, with just the chemicals and everything that are released into the air is gonna pose a lot of, like, health conditions. And I'm literally, it is going to be in my backyard. And not only that, like, I don't have to, like, you know, explain just, like, in what poor taste and inappropriate the name is in and of itself. And I don't need to go into that. I mean, come on, "Come and Go," let's... It's just ridiculous. And it's, they're going to be putting a 45-foot sign, a lighted sign, you know, that's gonna be, like, shining right into my backyard. It's gonna be daytime 24/7. And Caseville, one of the great things about Caseville is it doesn't have a lot of light pollution, like Salt Lake City. And so, just like, on that note, I just really wanted to reiterate, you guys, to really, like, give that some real thought. And, you know, I guess I'll end with a rhetorical question. I'm not expecting an answer, but how would you councilmen feel if they were going to, you moved to get away from, like, the lights and the jam and the hustle and bustle, and it literally is within 100 feet of your house? And how far would you go to stop such an event from happening? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up, Ms. Mann. Please state your name.
My name is Melinda Mann. Okay. I don't get up very often in front of people, but I've learned something today that I just wanted to... I don't know whether it's a comment, or whether it's something to bring to your attention, given the "Come and Go" gas station. I was talking to my husband about it, so I hope I explain it correctly, that when new things go in, or new developments go in, there's things associated with them, such as called "an impact fee", where that means that when something goes in and it affects something that's already currently there, then you can impose impact, or associate impact fees to those new things going in to help with the impacts that it's going to have on the current developments, current residents. So, my question, or things I just wanted to bring to your attention was, given that, so I live in the Westgate neighborhood, down in West Caseville, which is where that "Come and Go" gas station's going to go. So I don't know whether it's a city responsibility, whether it's a UDOT responsibility, or if it's a "Come and Go" responsibility, if that gets placed there, that you give an impact fee, I guess, to "Come and Go", to require them to install a light, which would help with the part of the safety concern of the children getting to and from school. Secondly, an impact fee that pertains to... How do you say that? The oil tanker, the oil, the underground fuel tanks. Yeah. That throughout time, whether it's 10 years, 15 years, 30 years, can crack or rot over time, and in return, leak gas and oil. And given that my house is so close, and my yard is so close to where this gas station's going to go, that I think it should take into consideration that it's going to have an impact if those such things were to happen, that there's an impact fee placed with "Come and Go" as well for that to take care of, whether it's fences that will have to be torn down, yard replacements, you know.
Right.
Just my thoughts on that.
Thanks, Mindy.
Thank you so much.
One more person. We have room for one more person, if you'd like to speak. No? Okay. Thank you, thank you all for being here, and appreciate your comments. Okay. We'll now have a presentation by Mercy Housing. Come on up. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm excited to be here. Can I also send some stuff down the line? Okay. And can you all also see what's on the screen? Okay, perfect, okay. So I am just gonna talk about Francis Peakview Apartments, which is in Caseville, owned by Mercy Housing. My name is Hannah, and I am the Resident Services Coordinator, so I run the community center at Francis Peakview Apartments. I'm happy to be here. And should I just say next? Okay, next. No worries. Okay. I'm just gonna breeze through this side. I think we all know that there is an affordable housing crisis in the US in general, and that extends into all of our cities and towns. Let me go to the next one. So I wanna talk specifically about what that looks like in Caseville. In Caseville, there is about 3.2% of our residents that live below the poverty line. It's not a huge number, but it does end up being more than 1,000 Caseville residents that live in poverty. So at Francis Peakview Apartments, it's a low-income housing unit, and we have roughly between 250 and 300 residents that live at our housing unit. The median annual income of our residents is just over $6,000 per year, which is compared to Caseville's, you know, over $100,000 a year. You can go to the next one. Um, I'm missing something, but that's okay. This is Francis Peakview Apartments. So it's owned, Mercy Housing is the owner, I guess, owner and operator. Mercy Housing seeks to create affordable, service-enriched housing. You can go to the next one. And we are throughout the United States. We're in 20 different states, we serve over, well, close to 44,000 people. But Francis Peakview is the only Mercy Housing property in Utah, so far. Okay, you can go to the next one. So these are our residents from Francis Peakview, these are all of your neighbors. And we provide lots of different services, in addition to just affordable housing. You can see a picture from our back to, one of our back-to-school events, some of our arts and crafts events, and then from our teen leadership program that we run. You can go to the next one. If you click it again, does it go to the next slide, or does it add... Okay, go back. Some graphics are missing, but it's okay. The goal for our residents kind of depends on where they are in their life. If our property serves families, seniors, and folks with disabilities, as well as formerly homeless residents. So for some of those residents, the goal is just going to be to stay in place with dignity and live their lives there. For others, we might hope that they will move on and move out of Mercy Housing eventually. You can click next. So just a few more stats about our complex. We're on Mutton Hollow Road, so we're right next to Safe Harbor Crisis Center. We share a fence with them, actually, and just down the street from Creekside Elementary. As I said, well, right now, we have 238 residents. Almost 90 are under the age of 18, and then we have 30 seniors. And so we do different programming for all of those ages. 91% of our youth that we serve come from single-parent households, and roughly half of our residents are Hispanic or Latinx, and a lot of those are Spanish-speaking. A lot of times, the question is, like, how are we funded? So we're funded through Rural Development, or RD, which is a federal program, and then we're part of the state Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program, which just means that lowers our rent, and then Rural Development comes in and subsidizes our rent. So our residents pay 30% of their income, whatever that income may be, whether it's from a full-time job, or whether that is social security, or whether that is $20 their grandma gives them once a month, whatever that income, that income is. Okay, you can go to the next one. So just a rough overview of how it works, how we're able to provide these services. We do have our property management team, our maintenance staff, that you would see at any other apartment complex, but what makes us unique is the resident services piece and the community center. So that includes, as far as staff goes, me. We have two staff that run our programs for youth. One is over the teens, and one is over the elementary schoolers. And then we get a lot of support from volunteers and the greater community as well, including agencies and just our awesome volunteers. So a little bit more about resident services. There's five kind of umbrella areas. So health and wellness for us includes a food pantry, one-on-one support for mental health, referrals to services for whatever health services our residents might need. We also do vaccine clinics, things like that on our site. Out of school time, which includes after-school and summer programming, I'll go into more in a minute. We do financial education, that might be through classes, that might be through, again, one-on-one support. The housing stability piece is obvious, we're affordable housing, but we really work to make sure that our residents can stay housed. If we have a resident that may be headed toward eviction, I work closely with our property management team to help that resident fix whatever is happening in their life that is leading them toward that, whether that's helping them learn how to better take care of their apartment so that they're not getting violations for housekeeping, or whether that is connecting with services to stop smoking, or it might even be just better financial skills. The community engagement piece, we do, like, arts and crafts, holiday parties, that kind of thing, just trying to get the community to grow. And we'd love to bring in the greater Caseville community in that way as well. Okay, you can go to the next one. So I went through a little bit of this, but these are just a few options of other things we can do that we, depending on the resources we have. You can go to the next one. I do, as I said, wanna spotlight our OST, or our Out-of-School Time Program. So we serve kids every day after school and throughout the summer. We currently have about 70 elementary schoolers registered and 30 teenagers. That's over our 90, you know, kids that we have on our property, but we also serve the greater Caseville community through our, through our Out-of-School Time Program. Our elementary schoolers, kind of our focuses with them are life skills, like emotional regulation and cooperation, academics. Most of our kids are quite behind in school. Poverty tends to overlap with other areas, such as trauma, disability, things like that. And so we really work hard to support our kids academically and help them to hopefully get at grade level. Play is a huge thing that we do through our OST program, again, because of the backgrounds that a lot of our kids might come from. They may not have social skills typical for their ages, so we try to foster those social skills through play. And we also do a lot in terms of diversity and inclusion, so that all of our kids know that they're welcome and loved. Our teenagers focus more on career exploration and leadership skills, as well as life skills. And in the summer, we add a food component, so we're feeding the kids, 'cause they don't have the school lunches to rely on. And we teach them to cook as well. They cook a lot of their own meals over the summer. We try to do field trips whenever we have funding available, and we've done quite a few in Caseville City that have been really cool. And it's just a safe place for kids to be throughout the summer, when they really need that safe place. You can go to the next one. A few other things I'd just like to highlight quickly. Mercy Housing provides a scholarship that residents can apply for. It's in conjunction with Epic Real Estate. 25 Mercy Housing residents receive that scholarship each year, and three of the five years that we've applied, one of our residents has been one of the recipients. So we're really proud of our residents, we have really amazing people on our property. Yeah, you can go to the next one. Oh, and Emmy, who was on that, is also on the paper that you have. If you wanna read a little bit more about her story, she was one of our recipients. We have a food pantry on-site. The Bountiful Food Pantry stocks our shelves every other week, and our residents can come in at any point to get food. We do deliver to residents who need it, and they're able to make appointments every other week, but we're open, open whenever, whenever they need to come as well. And we can also serve the greater community through this food pantry. Sometimes people come in who just need it, and we're able to serve them. We also, I don't have a slide for these, but I just wanna mention quickly a few other programs that we do. We do a sub for Santa program, and this last year, we served about 150 kids through that program. We do a lot for our senior citizens. We have some great volunteers who come, and we'll check in with them as much as possible, usually weekly, to make sure that their needs are being met. We have VIDA on-site, which is a tax, free tax preparation service for low-income families or individuals. And we also do quite a few drives, so we do a back-to-school night where we provide kids with what they need to go back to school. And if, I don't know if anyone's kids go to Creekside, but that list is pretty extensive, so it's a big thing that we do there. And the Rotary Club, Caseville Rotary Club, helps us out every year, providing Thanksgiving meals for our families as well. So we do get a lot of support from Caseville City. We had a fall carnival that was well-attended by some of our city council members. As I said, we did some tours around Caseville, some field trips, and were able to visit the police department. And it really is thanks to our generous volunteers and sponsors, and all the members of the community that were able to do really exciting and amazing things for our residents, including, like, getting princesses to come sometimes, 'cause kids are kids, and we want them to have those kind of experiences. If you can go to the next one. I did just wanna mention a few other ideas that perhaps the city could get more involved in. I wanna mention all the things that we are receiving help, or potentially could be. Caseville Gives helps us for the past two years, and that's been really beneficial to us around the holiday season. We are applying for the Ramp Grant, so we're excited about the potential for that. The Rotary Club, and the Interfaith Council, and communities that care, we're all, they're all organizations we have worked with in the past that Caseville City has kind of helped us get in touch with. And as I said, we have had some good support for our special events. And just the fact that Caseville City offers scholarships for the recreation programs is huge for low-income residents. We would be happy to have any member of the city council or anyone from the community tour our property and our community center at any time. If you're interested in seeing more about what we do and how you might be involved, we can be really, really flexible with how you'd like to get involved. We always need more volunteers. As I said, a lot of our youth are behind in school, and one-on-one engagement is the best way to support them with reading and academics. We don't quite have that right now, that one-on-one support, so even just coming to read. I know Caseville has a youth council that needs hours, so talk to me at some point, and we'd love to have them volunteer with us. I know Caseville has a lot of small businesses that are amazing, and we'd love to get them more involved as well. And we are going to be starting what's called a community council on our property once a month, and would love for members of Caseville City Council or the community to join us for that and learn more about what we do and how they can help. That's all from outside. I don't know if you're allowed to ask questions, but if you have any, I'm happy to answer.
Council, do we have any questions?
That is a great presentation.
I will say, Hannah, we appreciate everything that you do. I know that there's so many volunteer opportunities for members of the community that do come and do your after-school programs, and they read with the kids, and so, yes, for sure. If people wanna get involved, I would encourage them to do that.
Okay, thank you, yes.
We appreciate the great service.
We do serve a big chunk of that 3.2% of Caseville citizens that live in poverty. So we welcome any support that the rest of Caseville can give. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Oh, Nate, Councilmember Jackson.
I have a question, and that's fantastic, what you do, and the service you provide, and the opportunity for all of us to be involved. What type of, do you ever have needs from the community, like, as far as donations? I know you mentioned, like, sub for Santa-type stuff at Christmas time, but is there any, like, needs that you have for donations or whatnot?
Yes, definitely. And I can send some more specifics. But we are always in need of individually wrapped snacks, because we feed our kids an after-school snack every day, and especially where they deal with food insecurity, that's really important, that we're able to do that. Plastic spoons and plates and napkins for those after-school snacks is helpful. We also are always in need of disinfecting wipes and paper towels. Kind of boring stuff, but we need them to function. We are working on beefing up our toy supply, and we also would love to serve our 0- to 5-year-olds a little bit more than we do now. So we have a toy wish list as well. Fidget toys is another big one that our kids tend to go through a lot. That's really helpful in the curriculum that we use with our kids. There's more, but I can send it.
And I would love to see, like, have you communicate with us often to tell us what we can do, maybe highlight it on our website, and just off, give everyone the opportunity to drop off stuff.
Well, we'll put you in contact with someone. We'll have someone reach out to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Hannah, thank you- Hannah, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you so much.
Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, very good presentation.
Thank you. All right, Council, conflicts of interest. Do we have anything to declare? No conflicts tonight? Okay. All right, we'll move to our consent, consent item list. Does someone want to make a motion to move the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve consent items A, B, C, and D.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments? No, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes, thank you. Okay, we're on to action, action item A, which is a preliminary plat subdivision for the MCW Kaseville subdivision located at one-five west two-hundred north Terraform Companies. I'll turn the time over to Melinda to present this.
Mayor, Council, thank you. Before I get into the bulk of the item for the MCW Kaseville subdivision, I just wanted to provide a brief overview. I know we have a lot of citizens here tonight that are interested in the subdivision process, so I added a few slides um, just to kind of help understand the process and uh, and essentially some very high-level land use overviews. So, the first item I wanted to talk about was that Utah is what is called an early, we have early vesting rights. Um, there's other states that do not have those vesting rights that occur early in a, a land use process, but Utah has early vesting rights. And what vesting means is that when an application is received, at that point in time, they are vested in the laws that have been adopted at that, at the time of the application. Um, the zone is what sets the use of the property and that is what we call a legislative item. On legislative items, the city council has pretty broad discretion. The subdivision is um, sometimes a next step in a land use process. Sometimes subdivisions don't need to be um, approved before a land use can move forward, before a building could be constructed, and sometimes they do need to be approved. Um, most of what we see in Kaseville is residential subdivisions, but from time to time, we do have the commercial subdivisions and we have two of those on the agenda tonight. So, after subdivision, if that's necessary, the next step in the process is that somebody submits a building permit. That comes into my department. It goes through a site plan approval, which my, um, my uh, either myself or our zoning administrator goes through and makes sure that site plan is um, is in compliance with all of the code that we have, uh, specifically the zoning code. That also goes through a building plan review process. And we also look at the engineering, the subdivision standards to ensure that that's all in compliance. That building permit process is something that happens at a staff level. Um, really the only thing that comes to the city council is the zoning. Um, so, and then once all of those reviews have determined that the building, the site plan is in compliance, an applicant pays their fees and then ish, we issue the building permit. So then I wanted to talk just briefly about a subdivision. Um, a subdivision is what is called an administrative action and there's little to no discretion on these items. Essentially what we're doing is checking boxes that our code has outlined and we're ensuring that what comes to us is compliant with those codes. Um, a subdivision is drawing lines on a map at a very simple explanation. So, we have uh, one subdivision tonight that's taking six lines and drawing four and creating four uh, pieces of property. The other one we have on tonight is taking one piece of property and creating two lots. That's really the only thing we're here to determine tonight. And so, how state code works and how the subdivision process works is an application comes in. If it meets the currently adopted codes legally, we need to approve that application. If it did not meet the currently adopted codes, um, it probably would never make it to an agenda because staff would review that. We would push back with the applicant and say, this doesn't meet code, you need to make these revisions and bring it back. If it did make it to a point in a process where it was with planning commission or city council, what would happen is the council could deny that and um, specifically outline the parts of city code that it was non-compliant with, and then the applicant would go back and fix that and return with a compliant subdivision plat and we would begin again where it doesn't meet code, yes, then um, the legal outcome needs to be that we approve that subdivision. So, I know this next slide is going to disappoint a lot of people in the audience tonight and maybe those who are watching, but what we are not approving this evening or what is not in consideration on the agenda items is zoning. Zoning is what sets the use. Uh, all of these subdivisions that I'll talk about in a minute are zone general commercial. We're not approving a project. We're not considering traffic impacts. We're not considering health mitigation measures. We're not approving the sale of tobacco or alcohol. We're not approving a site plan and we're not approving building plans. So, all of these items, um, site plan, building plans, that comes later on in the process, but um, I just wanted to kind of set this expectation upfront that we're not approving a project, we're not approving a zone. We're really just talking about drawing a line on the map. So, with that, I'll continue forward to the preliminary plat subdivision that Terraform has submitted. The address is approximately one-seventy-five west two-hundred north as the mayor mentioned. The zoning is general commercial and all combined, the lot size is just over three acres. And the current uses, there's um, some existing businesses and there's some vacant residences that are on those existing lots. So, to show you, we have general, or excuse me, Golden West Credit Union that exists on the east side of this proposed subdivision. These homes are um, and I think these two are actually boarded up with no trespassing signs. Photofly just vacated their property and um, and then these other properties I believe are vacant as well. So, what the proposed subdivision tonight is to take all of those properties, combine some, and then create these four parcels. Lot one would be where the Golden West Credit Union would remain. The um, two-hundred north through this area between the I-15 and Main Street is owned by UDOT. So, UDOT has told the applicants that they have to share an access. So, what has come forward is uh, to, to allow that, this, um, the applicant has purchased some property from Golden West Credit Union and so, the line that exists right now between these parcels and Golden West will be shifting to the east just a little bit, I think about twenty feet. And then this lot two would be um, reserved for what we believe will be an application in the future for a car wash. And the applicant would like to reserve lot three and four for an upcoming mixed-use uh, project. Um, that mixed-use project would be considered a zone change. That would come to the planning commission and then the city council prior to any approvals. So, their intent at this point in time is that they would put a two-story office building here and hopefully be able to fit three townhomes on, on this lot. The preliminary plat subdivision was considered by the planning commission at the January eighth meeting. They voted six-zero to recommend approval to the city council. And staff is also recommending that you make the preliminary plat subdivision for MCW Kaseville. I have taken any questions and I think the applicant is here this evening. There he is in the back. So, if you have any questions for the applicant, he's here to answer those and then I can also answer any questions you may have.
Applicant, please step forward and we appreciate you being here. We, we appreciate when the applicants show up and we we expect to be able to talk to you and ask you some questions. So, Council, do you have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Adams.
Unless he had something to say prior.
Did you want to? Okay.
So, uh, and maybe Melinda also can answer this, but it, right now, we're not talk, we're just talking about the uh, sub, subdividing. Is, is the car wash going, is there a car wash for sure going in or is it? I mean, I, I guess that's what I'm curious about, if you, if you already know one's going in or if that's kind of.
Would you like me to state my name and address for the rest?
You don't, you don't need to state your address.
You already have my name and address.
But state your name, please. Yes.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it. My name's Elliot Smith with Terraform Companies and uh, we're a retail development firm out of Salt Lake City and we do a lot of development work for Mr. Carwash. So, just a little bit of background, I won't get lengthy. A lot of people are here for different things. I'll be fast for everybody. Um, so we're doing the development work for Mr. Carwash, not the balance of the property. Property's owned by a, a different individual. Um, and he'll retain ownership of lots two, three, and four on this subdivision. Golden West owns lot number one, but as Melinda indicated, they'll be part of this proposed plat. Uh, to answer your question, Councilmember Adams, yes, uh, Mr. Carwash, branded tunnel car wash um, is, uh, we, we've submitted engineering and building plans for lot two.
Awesome. And uh, and then I guess from my standpoint, I mean, one of the, my biggest frustrations with two-hundred north is that there wasn't a lot of planning put into like having the buildings line up or it's just sort of hodgepodgey. Um, how do we prevent, I mean, how do we have, make sure that this fits within the look that we want for the rest of two-hundred north or are there restrictions that we can set? No, I mean, that's what I'm saying. You know what I mean, like?
We, we don't actually have.
Do, we don't have anything that we, we don't have any restrictions that we can put in.
Melinda can speak to that more.
So, our, our zoning code
We have setback requirements.
Uh, states what those setbacks for buildings would be. In the commercial zone, we don't have required setbacks. We don't have required lot sizes or lot widths. Um, really the only requirement in the general commercial zone is to provide a twenty-foot yard area between any commercial use and a residential use. Um, but to dive a little deeper into the answer of your question, we do have in Title eighteen, we have some commercial building standards that essentially states, you know, we'd like to see materials, natural materials. Um, so that would be something we would review as well as that application comes in to make sure that um, it complies with that, I think it's eighteen-six. Um, but that's where we have architectural standards for commercial buildings. Um, I will say there's not a lot of architectural standards. Um, there's places like Park City that has very strict architectural standards and they want a very specific look. So, when you go up there, that's why it all kind of looks very rustic and kind of, um, you know, very, very similar. And, but our code is not that, that strict.
So, what you're saying is we'd have to change it in the code process?
Correct. And to have that be applicable, you would have to have that approved before anyone submitted for that building permit.
Thank you so much. And I'm sure you plan, yeah.
Yeah, may I share a comment just on the architectural theme? Uh, I know you see a lot of these tunnel car washes popping up all over the place. Um, I'm a little bit biased probably because we do a lot of work for Mr. Carwash exclusively, no other car wash companies. They're a national publicly traded car wash company. They take a lot of pride in what they do. In fact, they're the only national publicly traded uh, car wash company in the country, um, at least to my knowledge. And they take a lot of pride in foresighted architecture for all of their buildings. They typically go above what the minimum city requirements are for architecture, uh, as well as landscaping. So, you'll see, I, I don't know that this body will get a chance to see all of those details. I don't know because it's staff level approval, because it's zone for the intended use. But their landscape plans are overdesigned with landscape lighting, birmingham, a lot of creativity, boulders, things like that. Um, I, I think you'll be pleased with how it looks for a car wash.
Awesome.
If that, if that helps at all and just, yeah, anyway, I have another comment, but I'll save the time.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Councilmember Jackson.
I have some questions and just to echo what Councilmember Adams said, yeah, that's right next to uh, Kaseville's historic district. Um, we want to preserve as much as possible uh, the flow and the look to not disrupt, you know, our historic roots in that neighborhood, the beautiful homes. And I just looked at a picture of uh, Mr. Carwash and it actually looks pretty good um, with bricks and whatnot. So, yeah, my question is, uh, with lot three and four, uh, why are you wanting to divide those up at this point? If, if uh, you're not moving forward with those plans right now, you're, you're specifically moving forward with the car wash. And the reason why I ask is not necessarily opposed to the plans, but um, uh, depending on uh, you know, when the car wash is finished, if that um, uh, indicates some changes may need to be made, more housing or more office space or whatnot, so.
So, um, like I, like I indicated, um, I don't own the property, so we're here representing, we have appropriate affidavits signed and whatnot. So, what I can say based on conversations with the gentleman Bo Oguzala, is his name, uh, his group owns all, I think there's five lots there right now, just individual parcels, not really lots in a subdivision. And the reason we're proposing to plat at this time is because the car wash is already zoned, the property's already zoned for that intended use. And so, we didn't want to have what they want to do on the mixed-use side, slow down or inhibit what we could do on lot two. But I, I understand the deeper purpose behind your question, what if they need more of some kind of use or another for the mixed-use? They've already taken a look at that and they felt comfortable with the commercial component being on lot two for the car wash, commercial being on lot three, and then a smaller residential portion being on lot four. I know that, I think they've had conversations with you as well, Melinda, uh, based on the, the mixed-use proposal and they felt like it was a pretty good mix and that would be okay. But we, we're the ones that actually are, we, I'm saying Mr. Carwash, are driving to subdivide so that we can bifurcate the site plan approval process and we don't get hung up and stuck while they go through the mixed-use rezone.
So, you're just, you're just here for lot two, basically?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Correct. I mean, for, well, for the subdivision plat
Yeah.
is why we're here tonight, but my representation interests are for Mr. Carwash on lot two.
Okay. And a question too, like can we agree to subdivide um, lot two by itself and not three and four? Does that negatively impact the proposal? I don't know what the timeline they're looking at, because.
Sure. So, so let me first answer the question that you asked just a minute ago. Um, part of the reason why an applicant hasn't submitted a mixed-use project or a, for lot three and four is because we're revising our mixed-use code. So, I essentially have told applicants that are interested in a mixed-use project that we have six months to bring code revisions to councils, essentially called a temporary land use restriction. And um, that mixed-use code amendment is on our agenda this evening as well. So, once that gets approved through city council, really quickly, I think we'll see two projects come through. They've just been waiting for these changes to be approved. To answer your second question, um, I think, and, and Mr. Mills may also be able to address this, but what is proposed meets code? So, I, I don't think you could legally deny the other two lots to be subdivided because this does meet code.
But, Melinda, but realistically, there's no reason not to at this point. Because if it came in and they decided to change a project and if their project is on the shelf waiting for our mixed-use uh, coding to change or be updated, but if they came in at that point, um, we would just potentially be doing a rezoning change for those two lots of this larger parcel, which we would address at that time.
Yeah, and we also have provisions in our subdivision code that says preliminary plat revision is uh, is valid for one year after the date of approval. And then final plat, which goes only to planning commission, is also valid for one year. So, what that means is um, they would have a year after preliminary plat approval to bring the final plat subdivision forward. And once that final plat subdivision is um, approved, they have a year to get all of the items remaining in the subdivision code into the city engineer and reviewed and get that recorded. Now, we do have an other, usually residential, but we have, um, and Westgate is a good example of this, but there are several phases of that Westgate subdivision. And so, three and four, I don't think have been, um, I think we may have recorded those last month, but because the activity occurred on that first phase of the subdivision, the approval for the remaining phases continues to be valid. approval for the remaining phases continues to be valid because we consider that, that vesting, that initial subdivision and the construction and all of that taking place.
I have one.
Thank you, Councilmember Oaks. Councilmember Blackham.
I just have one technical question. And I want, just for your awareness, because you are separating in separate parcels, when we do an overlay zone, each lot will stand on its own. So, in order for you to do mixed use on lot four, you would have to meet at least the 30%, which is what's proposed, of commercial on that lot also with your residential. So, that's just something to be aware of. I don't, I believe that's how it would be. So, if you're planning three townhomes on lot four, it wouldn't work without that 30% minimum of commercial in the general commercial zone if we change it to that. So, you're aware of that.
Thank you for that noted and understood. I believe the group that owns the property is aware of that.
Yeah. I have provided drafts of the document through the various stages to the applicants that are waiting for the text amendment.
Just didn't want to go through this process and say, we're going to do two-story commercial on lot three and three townhomes on lot four and find out they have to have at least 30% of that commercial on lot four also.
Right. And I believe that information that Melinda provided is what drove these lot lines, because lot four was a little bit larger.
Okay.
And they shrunk that down to, in an effort to meet those forthcoming requirements.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Blackham.
All right. Ready for a motion?
Yeah. I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve action item A, preliminary plat subdivision of the MCW Caseville subdivision located approximately 175 West, 200 North. Terraform Companies LLC, Elliott Smith.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Comments? Seeing no comments, I'll call for a vote. Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. The next action item is a preliminary plat subdivision for the Westgate Estates Commercial subdivision located at 2356 West, 200 North and 236 something West, 200 North for Perry Land Investments. Before I kick this to Melinda, I, I'm going to just set this up a little bit. This, this has been very frustrating. Raise your hand if you're here to talk about this. Okay. All right. I want you to know that we've received your emails, we've received your messages, your comments, your phone calls, and this very much hits close to home. My sister-in-law, sitting on the front row by my husband, lives right there. Mindy and Paul and my brother-in-law, they live right there. When they first bought their house, before they built it, you know, we kind of talked about what would go there. And, and at the time, general commercial, first of all, this lot has been general commercial since 2004. Okay? It's been in the, the previous city plan and it's been in, it was included in the new general plan. That was before the school was built. The school was built in 2015. It was before the subdivision was considered because that's recent and before this has come before us. And so, we were talking about this future, you know, the future West Davis corridor and we said, yeah, it'll be out there. And then, this is a general commercial. And they asked me, they said, well, do you think it'll ever, what will it be? And I said, I don't know. It could be a gas station, it could be an office building, it could be a dentist office. It's general commercial. Whatever is general commercial would, would qualify for that, for that location. They kind of jokingly said, well, will it be a car, a gas station? And I said, I don't think so and I'll tell you why. And this is something that most of you are already aware of. Okay? When we've had discussions with UDOT, when they put in the West Davis corridor, UDOT has told us, okay, we're not going to allow access off of 200 North. Okay? When this was originally planned back in 2004, that wasn't part of the discussion and that wasn't the understanding of the city, that access could potentially be blocked on 200 North. Okay? So, when they're talking to me and asking me, will it be a gas station? I said, I don't think so because I can't imagine a gas station not having access there, wanting to be there as a gas station. Now, I don't build gas stations, I don't own gas stations, I've never worked at one. I don't know how they operate. But that was my assumption at the time. So, you know, fast forward this, the, the general commercial, it's, it's general commercial, Perry Homes gets it under contract and they have a gas station that's willing to go there. And Perry Homes was very direct with them and they said, look, this possibly could be limited, your access might be limited. And come and go, as is their ability to, to say so, they said, it's okay with us, we're okay with that. And so, so I guess I'm telling you all of this because I want you to know, this hits close to home. All of us sitting up here ran for city council, I ran for mayor because we wanted to represent our community, we wanted to make a difference. The problem in this situation, and believe me, if I had a magic wand, I would wave it and I would make this go away for my sister-in-law and my brother-in-law, whom I dearly love, and my little nieces and my nephew that live right there, and all of you. Okay? Because I understand it's going to be frustrating and it's gonna, it, there will be more cars because of the West Davis corridor, et cetera. There is literally nothing I can do. I cannot prevent this gas station from going in. And the discussion that we're having today is not whether or not the, the gas station's allowed there. It is allowed there. It's a general commercial area, the city has to say yes to this because it is, is allowed. We can't just say, okay, we'll take a dentist office, but gas station, no, because our, our obligation is to follow our ordinances. So, as much as it is to represent everyone and your concerns, it's also up to uphold the laws within Caseville. And so, I'm, I'm saying this because I want you to know, this is a big deal to us. This is weighed heavily on our minds, we've had many discussions. I wish so much that I could make this go away and just say, okay, gas station gone and it's disappeared. I wish I could do that. I can't do that, the city council can't do that. And so, I, I just want you to know that there is a ton of empathy and a ton of compassion in, in that we, yes, would we want to live next door to a lot that would become a gas station? Probably not because we don't live in your subdivision. I will say this though, there's nothing that we can do. It's already under contract, we went and met with Perry Homes and we said, hey, you know, is there anything you can do? And they said, look, the earnest money is already hard, we are contractually obligated to sell to come and go. There is nothing we can do to back out of this agreement at this point. So, I want you to know that we are doing everything that we possibly could, we've had so many discussions, so many discussions. Because if we could, we, we could do this, we would try. The other thing that we've been doing. So, West Davis corridor, it started being built, as you know, a while ago. Okay? The city has had multiple, multiple conversations with UDOT. Councilmember Blackham, a year and a half ago, said, hey, UDOT, you messed up. There are two roads that cross, there are two trails.
Lot longer than that.
Okay, longer than that. Two trails that cross and it's an at-grade crossing, meaning that they cross on the street level. So, we went to them as a city and said, hey, you need to put an underpass or an overpass here to make it safer. Because once this freeway goes in, you're going to have more traffic and this is, this is a trail crossing and it's a very popular trail. And we've had, we've had multiple, multiple discussions with UDOT. And they've said, well, you know, it's going to cost this much money, it'll be $7 million to put an overpass in, we'll see what we can do. So, about a month and a half ago, we had another conversation with UDOT. And we said, okay, UDOT, you need to put in a light. Okay? We need, we need an intersection light here. And we can't just wave our wand as a city and put in a light. It requires traffic studies, warrant studies, and this is something within UDOT's purview to make a decision regarding whether or not there's a traffic light there. And so, we said, look, there's a school right here, there's probably going to be a gas station right here, there are these neighbors and there will be more houses because Perry has other phases that they plan to build. And so, we've had these discussions with UDOT and they said, okay, what we'll do is we will take this under consideration and we will go back and we will do the warrant study and we will find out if we have enough traffic here that will warrant a traffic light. So, I want you to know that your concerns are completely valid and we understand them and we are doing everything we can from our perspective to be able to help. What we have before us today is not whether or not the gas station could go there. That decision has already been made because it's an allowable use. Our decision here as a council is whether or not to approve a preliminary plat subdivision for Westgate. And that's, that's the decision that we can make for you tonight. And, and so, I just, I, and you are still free, those who have signed up to speak, you can speak and you can say whatever you'd like to say. But I just want you to know that the expectation on your end, what we can do and what we can't do, believe me, if we could do it, I promise you, I would have done it a long time ago. But, but I can't do anything about this at this point. There will be a gas station there unless come and go decides, okay, maybe we'll go somewhere else and we'll build a gas station somewhere else. That is, but in talking to them, they are new to Utah, they built one gas station in Draper, they have another one under contract and they want to build more. And they're new to this market and so, it's very much in their interest to try to build their gas stations. And so, so that's just where we're at. I just want to be very open and, and let you know what we've done so far. And the council members will also, I'm sure, speak to this. And so, when you do come up to speak, after Melinda presents the subdivision plat, a preliminary plat presentation, you'll have three minutes. And when you're up here speaking to us, it's your time. And so, we don't do a back and forth conversation with you. Now, during our discussions, we can comment on what you say, but when you come up here, that is your time to tell us what you think and to tell us where to go. I don't know. You can tell us whatever you want to do at that point, that, that's your time. And so, we won't interrupt you and we won't, and we'll just let you speak. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, setting it up so you know what to expect and what will happen. After you speak, then the council will have a discussion and we'll ask some questions and I'm sure that they'll all have something to share and they'll talk about their opinions and their feelings towards this. And then, we will have, we will, I will call for a vote. And the vote will be whether or not to approve this preliminary plat subdivision. And so, with that being said, I will turn the time over to Melinda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well said.
All right. So, as we just explained, we're here tonight to talk about a preliminary plat subdivision application that's been submitted. Oftentimes, and this was the case on the other item, but oftentimes, there is an applicant and it is different from the property owner. So, currently Perry Land Investments owns property, but as the mayor explained, they are under contract with Come and Go to sell this property to them. The property is at the west end of 200 North at 2368 West. It is zoned general commercial, it's three acres and right now, the land is vacant and undeveloped. And as the mayor stated, this has been zoned general commercial since 2004. Claiming innocence at that time, I was working for the city of Chandler, Arizona as a bottom feeder. So, it certainly, you know, has been in place for quite a while and before my time here. So, this is just an aerial of what the property looks like and you can see here to the beginnings of the West Davis corridor and how that's starting to shape up. I had a question from a resident prior to planning commission about whether or not this here was an access point. And it's not thus just how the property is shaped. So, Come and Go is proposing, proposing a two lot subdivision. Lot two would be two acres and lot one would be one acre. I also wanted to just say that the, the applicant does not need the subdivision to submit for a building permit approval, but their project, the gas station that we anticipate that application coming in, only needs two acres and they wanted to reserve the other portion of the property for a different use apart from the gas station. So, that's the reason why they're subdividing. And I should also state as well, they are on the phone tonight. I know that one of the individuals, Josh Rabe, that's on the phone, he had purchased flights and was able to find a hotel even though it was NBA All-Star Weekend, but they're coming out of Des Moines and their flight was canceled this morning. So, they're on virtually or through our go-to meeting. I know at the planning commission, we did have a little bit of problem with them hearing the planning commissioners. So, when you speak, if you could just kind of speak directly into the microphone, I think that would help them add on their end, although I think our audio is working better tonight. So, as discussed with the last item, the preliminary plat process is that it goes to planning commission and then it comes to the city council. So, the planning commission heard this item on January 8th. They voted 6-0 to recommend approval to the city council. They did place two conditions on the approval. And one was that there would be a cross-access agreement between the two parcels and that could be done either by showing it on the plat, what the actual easement would be, or by having a separately recorded document. That is currently on the subdivision plat as a note that the access would be recorded through a separate instrument. That helps us in the future as we're tracking access to know that we would need to look to a separate document and it wouldn't be shown on the preliminary plat. And the second condition was they wanted to have an affirmative acknowledgement from staff that all the items that the preliminary plat subdivision code requires have been received and addressed. So, most of those items actually are reviewed by our city engineer and not me or my staff, but he has confirmed that's been through a review. This application actually was submitted to the city back in August. So, there's been five months of back and forth before this ever made it to an agenda. Because again, as staff, we want to make sure that we bring forward to you something that's in compliance and we don't want incomplete applications. And so, we did go back after that and confirm that all 22 of those items have been addressed in, in some manner. And so, we are here tonight recommending to the city council that you approve the preliminary plat subdivision with the same condition the city, or the planning commission placed on that, which is the recordation of a cross-access agreement.
Thank you, Melinda. So, we do have people signed up to speak to this. So, like before, you'll have three minutes and there is a timer. And then, we hope that you'll respect the time. Thank you. So, the first person is Blake Montgomery.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Tran, Caseville City Councilmembers. My name is Blake Montgomery. My wife and I own a home at 218 Northwest Gate Lane, the end of our driveway. Sorry. Where my daughters ride their bikes 20 feet away from where the entrance to the Come and Go gas station will be. Sorry. The site is also 400 feet from Case Creek Elementary School, where I hope my children will attend one day. I know that tonight you're not looking to approve the, the gas station, to approve this project, but you are looking to approve the preliminary plat for the subdivision. I'm opposed to this project though, because my family, neighbors, and Case Creek students will suffer due to adverse health effects as a result of gas station benzene emissions, increased, increased traffic that will make our streets less safe, especially with those entrances right on West Gate Lane. The increased availability of unhealthy food and tobacco products will further jeopardize the health of our children and the proposed sale of beer and possibly other alcohol products will increase the likelihood of crime in our neighborhood. I have coordinated with our speakers and they will touch on those points later and the scientific concern behind them. Have for you tonight, the application for this preliminary plat approval. We know that the gas station's going on lot two. Because of the health and safety impacts, the proposed Come and Go fails to meet requirement number 11 for approving a preliminary plat, which calls for buffer zones where non-compatible uses adjoining a proposed subdivision. I've emailed you guys a letter from a consultant that I've been working with, Richard Klein of SEDS, Community Environmental Defense Services. Number of scientific studies are cited in that letter, it's also in that packet I gave you, which document, doc, you meant, the adverse health effects of benzene and other compounds can affect those living and learning within 1,000 feet. In fact, a US EPA study referenced in the letter urging caution when locating schools within 1,000 feet of a gas station. As I briefly mentioned, Case Creek Elementary is only 400 feet from this proposed gas station site and easy access to a major freeway only 100 feet away. This and other factors show that the buffer zone between homes and the school is not compatible with the adjoining uses as required by section 19-3-3 of the City of Caseville subdivision regulations, specifically preliminary plat requirement number 11. Likely, the recommendation of the staff and planning commission did not take into account the lack of buffer zone preliminary, the preliminary plat provides for the health and safety impacts. There are no conditions that you could add to a preliminary plat approval for this gas station that would resolve those health conditions. Therefore, I would urge you to deny this plat. And I do understand that denying the subdivision does not stop them from building, but it's a step we can take as citizens to fight for ourselves. I would also like to ask anyone in the audience that is with me, that agrees with my points, please stand at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. One more mention, 266 names and reasons why a gas station should not be near an elementary. I have emailed that all to you guys, not quite all of them. I'll do it again tomorrow when I get the final results.
Thank you, Blake. Celia Burton, did I pronounce her, or Colin, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Tran and Caseville City Councilmembers. My name is Colin Burton. I live at 2169 West Richard Rambell Road, which was in, which is within the Case Creek Elementary School boundary. I also have a master's degree in biotechnology and have worked directly with benzene in a lab setting. I also worked for seven years at Mary Genetics, a cancer diagnostics company in Salt Lake City. I will provide further details on. diagnostics company in Salt Lake City. I will provide further details on the adverse effects of gas station benzene emissions. At one time, the big concern about gas station pollution was leaking underground storage tanks. With modern double-wall tanks, that concern is no longer as great. Several studies conducted over the past decade have shown that enough of the benzene and gasoline is released to the air to threaten the health of those living up to 500 feet from a gas station. The benzene is released when we refuel our cars, and it escapes from the pipes that vent vapor from underground storage tanks. I believe you have a copy of my testimony, where you'll see a photo of the vent pipes where benzene is released into the air. Benzene adverse health effects include cancer, anemia, increased susceptibility to infections, and low birth weight infants. During his testimony, Blake mentioned the letter from our consultant, Richard Klein of CEDS. I believe you each have a copy of this letter. Attached to the letter are three studies. The first scientific study documents that benzene can increase the number of cancer cases among those living up to 496 feet from a gas station. The second scientific study documented that 10 times more benzene comes from the storage tank vents compared to that released at the pump. The Utah Division of Air Quality only requires control of vapor release during the 1% of time when tanks are being filled by tanker trucks. There are no controls of benzene and other vapor releases during the other 99% of time. References made into the CEDS letter to the U.S. EPA study entitled "School Siting Guidelines," as noted in the table in my written testimony. U.S. EPA urges a closer examination of school sites located within 1,000 feet of the gas station. And of course, Case Creek Elementary is only 400 feet from the proposed Come and Go gas station. Because of this extremely inadequate buffer, the preliminary plat should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Shawna.
Good evening, Mayor Tran and Kaysville City Council members. My name is Shawna Burbidge. I live at 1776 West 75 South Kaysville, which is within, also within the Case Creek Elementary School boundaries. I'm a member of the Case Creek Community Council. I've been responsible for creating their Safe Routes to School Plan for the seven years that the elementary school has been open, and I hold a PhD in Transportation Methods, Models, and Computation. So I've been doing this for a while. My neighbors and I are concerned regarding the increase in traffic along the corridor that the Come and Go gas station will obviously produce. This is currently listed as a safe route to school. For the individuals that live in this subdivision, we will no longer be able to classify that as a safe route to school once this development is in place. As you may or may not know, there are only two entrances and exits to this subdivision, and if we put one of those out of the running per safe routes to school, these children will now have to walk nearly a half a mile to a mile out of the way to follow a safe route to school to get to Case Creek Elementary. The primary reference for estimating traffic generated by specific land uses is the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. I had my staff at my office run an independent analysis in addition to the numbers that have already been provided to you, and at minimum, a conservative estimate for the trip generation of this proposed land use is 1,500 cars per day. That includes 96 vehicles during the one-hour peak AM period when these kids are walking to and from school. So as they're walking to school in the morning, 96 vehicles will be entering that particular land use. From the applicant's plans, it appears that they're proposing approximately 3,900 square feet, which means that a more realistic estimate of vehicles in that area is about 3,300 over the course of the day, which would triple the amount during that AM peak period when these kids are walking to school. As you may or may not know, many of the Case Creek Elementary students do walk to school. We've already had a difficult time looking at safe routes because of the proposed West Davis Corridor, and as that goes in, we're struggling to find safe routes for these kids to get to school. I don't have to tell you that the siting of the school and the location has been a disaster since the school opened, but we're limited in our options of where we can even route these kids safely. We have police officers down there on a nearly daily basis, helping with the crossing guards. We've had several incidents, and these are our kids, and it's our job to keep them safe. We know that you're only looking at the proposed plat this evening, but I would encourage you, along with the buffer requirements, are buffers to provide safe access. With only a single access to the proposed development, you're going to have all of the vehicles traveling in and out of that development, going through a single access point, which is currently listed on the Case Creek Safe Routes to School map, and should be taken into consideration. I would encourage you that if this plan were to be improved, it would be contingent upon the landowner providing particular buffers and safe accommodation for pedestrians and cyclists and the students that are accessing the school across the street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nicholas Bigler.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Tran and Kaysville City Council members. My name is Dr. Nicholas Bigler. I live at 2264 West Summerfield Way, which is 640 feet away from the proposed Come and Go gas station convenience store. I've worked in the medical field now for five years, and I'm currently a full-time anesthesiologist at Davis Hospital here. I received my medical degree in Las Vegas, and I did my residency in Cleveland Clinic in Ohio. My neighbors and I are concerned that the Come and Go will harm the health of our children due to an increased availability of junk food and tobacco. And I do not need to stand here and explain to you the ills of childhood obesity, and there are many, including diabetes, high blood pressure, heart disease, sleep apnea, and so forth, and increased morbidity and mortality. The proposed Come and Go convenience store most likely meet the definition of a food swamp. And what this is, a food swamp's are outlets offering few healthy nutritional foods. Usually, they provide access to high-fat foods, sugary drinks, fast foods, takeaway or snack foods, and other unhealthy options, and these are often open all hours of the day and night. Following our examples of adverse health effects associated with convenience stores, especially those located near a school, as the proposed Come and Go will be near Case Creek Elementary. A higher rate of obesity was associated with the presence of convenience stores within a 10-minute walk of school, and a California study noted a 50% increase, which is staggering, in smoking among adolescents exposed to tobacco advertising during weekly visits to small grocery stores, convenience, and liquor stores. Of course, the proposed Come and Go is but a walk of a minute or two from Case Creek Elementary School, and a number of children attending this school will pass by the proposed convenience store, including my own. Because of this extremely inadequate buffer, the preliminary plat should be denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brianna Moon.
Good evening, Mayor Tran and Kaysville City Council members. My name is Brianna Moon. I live at 30 North 2300 West, which is 931 feet from the proposed Come and Go gas station convenience store. I am a mother, but also a teacher at Case Creek Elementary, and I feel ownership in protecting the health and safety of all of my students, which I've been a teacher since the school opened, and I've literally taught like the entire school at this point, and they're all my kids, and I want to keep them safe, and they all matter a lot to me. So my neighbors and I are concerned that the Come and Go will result in an increase in crime, which could spill over into our nearby homes. In my written testimony, you will find the fixture plan from the applicant's PUD development plans for the proposed Come and Go. This plan shows a beer cave for carryout alcohol sales. Our consultant, CEDS, compiled a review of scientific studies relevant to the potential effect of convenience stores with carryout or to be consumed elsewhere, alcohol sales on crime and public health. The review is attached to my written statement or testimony. These studies show a positive relationship between crime, as well as adverse health effects, and outlets selling alcohol for consumption for carryout. The gist of the research is that allowing carryout sale of alcoholic beverages at a proposed convenience store may increase crime and other adverse health effects, especially if this store is open 24/7. One study indicated that the presence of an off-sale 24/7 establishment may attract people at increased risk for involvement with violent crime. In another study, researchers concluded, children with an alcohol outlet on the route to school were more likely to be offered alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, as well as to be exposed to drug selling and seeing people using drugs. The proposed Come and Go is approximately 500 feet away from Case Creek Elementary School, and a number of children attending the school will pass by the proposed convenience store. Because of this extremely inadequate buffer, the preliminary plat for subdivision should be denied, and I know that that's not in question anymore, but I do want to add my concern for the safety of our community, and I'm very concerned about the crime rates going increasing, and what can we do about that? I'm just going to leave it at that. We need to do something about that. If we can't stop the gas station from coming, what can we do to protect the community from the increasing crime? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Clarissa Parker.
Hi, my name is Clarissa Parker. I would like to talk to what Melinda discussed at the beginning of this subdivision, where she was pointing out that we have to follow city code and if it meets everything. So I'd like to point your attention to city code 19-2-1, and it is titled "Subdivision Development Process." The very first point in the city's code about subdividing a property or development states the following: "The subdivider contacts the city engineer for information concerning the city's subdivision requirements and compatibility with the general plan, and discusses the proposed plan of development prior to preparing any plat plans or charts. So any subdivision must be compatible with the city's general plan. Members of the community are concerned that either, one, this conversation about the compatibility of this development according to this general plan didn't occur, or, two, the Kaysville City general plan was ignored during the process. The city's general plan is intended to guide the growth and development of this community that we all love, and was updated most recently last year." I'd like to quote directly from the general plan. "Chapter 2, Transportation and Connectivity, Goal 2, Objective 4, titled 'Balanced Community Corridors.'" It states, "Balanced community corridors, i.e. collector level, streets for modes and speed, establish slower design and posted speeds, frequent crossings, quality pedestrian environments, and ability to manage traffic at key destinations such as schools and commercial centers. A traffic video from a typical school pickup at Case Creek Elementary School was provided to some of you council members, and was especially, and we especially appreciate those who came to witness this in person. It's already an unsafe environment for vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles that likely worsens when the West Davis Corridor is completed. Adding a gas station will only exacerbate the safety concerns, especially since UDOT will reportedly not allow a traffic light at that intersection. This subdivision and project would not establish a quality pedestrian environment, nor manage traffic properly at a key destination like Case Creek Elementary." And an additional section in the Transportation and Connectivity chapter from the general plan, Goal 6, Objective 1, titled "Protect Neighborhoods," it states, "Build and maintain West Davis Corridor interchanges that complement neighborhoods by buffering from traffic, maintaining bike and pedestrian environments, and abating noise." Once again, this subdivision and development into a gas station would clearly be misaligned with the city's general plan. With access being prevented on 200 North, the West Gate neighborhood would not only not get the buffering called out by the city plan, but a high-volume gas station would actually require thousands of vehicles to pass through the neighborhood to gain access to the gas station. Additionally, the higher volume of traffic along with the noise of takers refueling the station, air compressors, bright night lights, etc., would not complement the neighborhood nor abate noise. We appreciate what you as public service and city officials do for our convivial neighborhoods. We plead and ask that the goals and intentions of the general plan be honored for the children of Case Creek Elementary and the surrounding neighborhoods by denying the proposed subdivision application or not meeting city code 19-2-1. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Stephen?
Good.
Stephen? Okay, all right. Kyle?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kyle Schaefer. I live in the Hill Farms Association. I'm a homeowner there, just off 200 North. Just so you guys know my background, I've been in the Air Force for 19 years on active duty. I have two small kids. We're going to be schoolish next year, and we're zoning for Case Creek. The biggest thing, everybody's kind of mentioned all the big concerns today, but I think the biggest thing nobody's really hit on that I think is important is from your guys' perspective as the leaders of the community, is we really miss an opportunity to really safeguard our kids and safeguard our residents. Once we knew the city, the school was going in, and we knew that we were putting residential around, and you guys were aware that there was a commercial space there, and we probably had the opportunity to potentially rezone that years ago as part of the general plan, but now, like you guys have already mentioned, we're boxed in a corner where you have to approve it because it is what it is. But it didn't have to be that way. And if we took the steps that we could have taken to protect our city and our residents and our school and our kids, we had the chance years ago with a zoning change, we could have prevented this, but now we can't. So I hope you guys take that as a lesson learned in the future for when we have this situation again, figure out other areas in the community where there is a commercial, you know, zone, something right next to a school or residence, that this could happen again, and let's fix it and let's address it so we don't let this happen again. It's just disappointing to me. And based on the fact that now we are kind of stuck in this bind, let's talk about what you can do. So what can you do? I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but things I've started thinking about are like, so light spill. So I've never seen a dark gas station, right? So lights are going to be everywhere, signage is going to be huge, everyone's upset. So what can you guys do within your realms of what you can do to limit that? I don't know about limiting the light spill, limiting the hours of operation. I mean, because nobody wants a 24-hour convenience store in their backyard, right? Selling, you know, sugar to kids, alcohol to adults, that just attracts riffraff, right? Nobody wants that. So I don't know what you guys can do, can't do, you know? So it'd be appreciated to take a look into that. Expanding sidewalks, expanding police presence, adding crosswalks, all those things that you guys probably have the power to do, I think we should be addressing. And the fact that we missed the boat on this is really frustrating to me as a homeowner in the area when this could have been prevented. I think that's all I have to say. So thank you. I hope you guys do what you can to, if not prevent this, to at least mitigate it the best you can.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was Kyle. Mindy? Paul? Paul? Would you like to yield your time to someone? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? No? Okay. Thank you. All right.
What discussions going on?
Just a second, yeah.
None of that. A joke better attorney?
We just have to share it if you, if you, okay. Can you wait one minute, though? All right, Melinda. So you've got the applicant on the phone. Are they in a position where they can speak to us?
Yeah, we have both Ryan Helder and Josh Rabe on the phone. So if there's any questions you have for them, you can ask, and I think they should be able to hear. Like I said, there is just some difficulty with the microphone, so if you can make sure that you're talking right into the microphone, that'll be helpful for them.
Okay. I think that my first question would just be if they were able to listen to the comments, and if they have any feedback from the comments that have been made.
Yeah, Melinda, this is Josh Rabe. I'm hoping you guys can hear me okay. Again, I apologize. I had plane tickets booked, but Mother Nature decided that we needed eight inches of snow in Iowa this morning. But I've heard what everyone said, and we appreciate all the efforts that staff has put into this project so far. We've enjoyed working with staff, and, you know, we appreciate all that they've done so far.
Were there two people on the phone? Did anyone else want to comment?
I don't know. Do you?
I think Ryan's on the phone as well. Ryan, did you want to say something, or are we good at this point?
Yeah, good evening. This is Ryan. Nothing else there at the moment.
Okay, council. I will, who would like to go first? I know we have lots of questions and thoughts. Councilmember Jackson, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Adams, for calling me out. So I was looking up, or trying to see if there were laws in the state as to how far away any establishment that sells alcohol must be from a school or a church. And I noticed that one of the pictures that was given to us, which was great, had that 500-foot red line, and that goes into the school property, and it actually goes into where the parking lot is, so it's not to the front. is, so it's not to the front door of the school, but if it even goes to the property and also that church. And so I was trying to do some quick investigative work to see if that is a state law and if that impacts this development. I know that falls kind of outside of what we are supposed to decide tonight, but I think it's something that would be nice to look into. And so that's what I was asking, basically.
So, to answer your question, Councilmember Jackson, the state does have regulations on that, and they have two guidelines. One is that alcohol cannot be sold within 200 feet of a community location, and that's typically defined as a park, a church, a school. This is further away than 200 feet. The other thing that they say is they can't do it within 600 feet of a regular pedestrian path. So, to answer those questions, and again, not related to the subdivision, but yes, at this location, they would be allowed to sell alcohol.
Yeah, and to your point, too, clarification's helpful on that. It said that may not be located within 600 feet measured by ordinary pedestrian travel or 200 feet measured in a straight line. So...
Yeah, the straight line from the property boundaries, it's about 250 feet.
The parking lot to the school or the church, or?
So, it's from, it's from the property line to the property line is what I measured.
Okay.
Okay. Excuse me, point of order. We usually don't take questions from the audience, but do you have a question?
Just a question. We've done research on this as well. I don't get, it might...
Oh, okay, okay. We, we usually don't take comments either, but you know, come on down.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I certainly don't wanna speak out of turn, but I do have some information. There are two municipalities within Davis County School District that have adopted code in recent years. They require 500 feet between a school and an alcohol outlet. We know that's not something that Caseville has right now, but again, as there's been some discussion about what can be done to mitigate crime, exposure to alcohol, drugs, and other things, that's something that, at this point, could still be considered, and we'd ask that we have an opportunity to work with you all on that type of code change as we kind of move forward with this. I know that's not something for tonight, but it's something certainly we'd like to engage in.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, councilmembers, who else would like to go? Are you, are you done with your questions at this point?
I have a bunch more questions, but I'll let other folks ask.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Blackham.
I mean, the comments I got, I mean, I don't, I don't know that the come-and-go is gonna generate more traffic. I think the West Davis Corridor is what's gonna generate the traffic. I believe the cars are gonna be going up and down that road, especially when you see the redo being done on I-15 that's going all the way from North Salt Lake to Farmington with a complete redo. I think you're going to see lots of traffic that's going to go onto the West Davis Corridor. Now, I don't think that UDOT has the ability to tell Caseville City that they, we can't allow access onto 200 North because that's our city street, we own the street, and that property abuts our street. And so access onto 200 North is something that I'm very adamant about allowing come-and-go to do so that we can keep most of those cars off that neighborhood street. And the other thing that's, I'm frustrated, I know Tammy said that it's been two years. I worked, from the day I got onto the council, about the first week I was on the council, I went down and saw the proposed design of the West Davis Corridor, and it showed an at-grade crossing at the bottom of 200 North on a freeway interchange. That made absolutely no sense to me. And I have talked to our senator, our president of the House, I have talked, tried to get into the governor's office, I have met with UDOT, I have tried to do everything I could possibly do, 'cause in my mind at the time, it was a simple change order to do a grade-separated crossing. It would have been a simple change order to do that, and I couldn't get anywhere with that. I tried to get money for it, I tried to get the county involved in it, because it's a regional trail. It's not just a Caseville path, it's a regional trail. And how easily that would have been to make a safe route pass, because you would have been able to take, out of your subdivision, a little walkway to the path, you could have gone on a grade-separated thing that went over onto the other side, and you would have been able to get off of that and go to school. Your kids would have never crossed a street doing that. I, I tried and tried and tried and got nowhere with that. I got from, oh, maybe we would participate if you'd participate. Well, Caseville, my council permitted, committed to participating in, I think they offered up $250,000 or something like that. Well, at that time, it was a $2 million project or $3 million to add this, when in reality, if they would have just done a change order on an $800 million project, it would have been next to probably nothing in comparison. The last numbers we got were $7 million. I can't in good conscience go to the citizens of Caseville and say, "I need $7 million of your taxpayer dollars to pay for a grade-separated crossing that's a regional crossing." I finally gave up.
What he means by that is a, is a bridge, a walking bridge?
It would have been above or below, whether, you know, whatever they came up with, but I, and I tried to keep point, I met with UDOT, says, "You've gotta show me where you have a freeway on-ramp and an off-ramp with a regional transportation that's in conflict with the cars." Well, I don't know of one. The only one I even know of is, there's Exit 2 in St. George, where they put it there temporarily, and now it's being moved to under the bridges now that they're building on the other side. So I don't know where there is one, and I, but I got nowhere, so I, and I think that would have helped with the concern of safe route for kids to school. All I can say is, call UDOT, you know? But as far as, as the, I wanna, I wanna address the commercial zone change a little bit, 'cause somebody come in. Believe me, I've been around the city for a long time, and it was citizens like yourself that came up and says, "We know we're gonna have a regional transportation down there, we're gonna rezone that. We want commercial down there because we want these things in Caseville." So it was a completely, it was the same people like you that were coming in and saying, "We don't want these gas stations put into the middle of our neighborhoods, we want them on our high-accessed highways, our big roads." And 200 North is a, is a main road in Caseville. It's one of our arterial roads, is one of, major road, isn't it a major road, I think, under our, our road plan? So, and, and services always come with freeways. I mean, Fourth, Fourth West, we have a 7-Eleven down here next to the freeway. And so, I know you think it was poor planning, but it really wasn't. It was actually following the planning that was recommended by the citizens at that time and the councils at that time. Save that strip next to 200 North for commercial zones so that we can provide services for all these people that are moving to West Caseville and all the development that's coming in. So, I know you're saying they made a mistake, but I don't, I don't really think they made a mistake. I think they did exactly what the citizens asked them to do. And, and I think that's why they rezoned it to that commercial early on. It's been zoned that way for almost 20 years, long before the school came in and long before the neighborhoods came in. And that was always in our zoning and in our general plan and shown as that. So I do think they're following the general plan. I know it doesn't make everybody happy, but I think based on previous citizens and input, West Davis Corridor coming in, and like I said, I don't think we're gonna slow the car, I don't think we're gonna have less cars. I think the cars may stop and go to the gas station now and may use the service that they have asked for previously, but I don't, I don't think it's gonna lighten the traffic load that's gonna be going down to get on the West Davis Corridor.
Thank you, Councilmember Blackham. Anyone else? Councilmember Oakes?
Yeah, I, and I almost don't say anything because I, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of emotion out there, and you hear it in your voices and the concern. I will say, that is as well-coordinated of presentations as I've seen in my little over year here. Very well done. I appreciate the email that consolidated all your comments instead of getting 100 different emails, which we've gotten sometimes. So it was much nicer to read that, so thank you. The concerns on, you know, on, on crime because they're selling alcohol, I, who's gonna be using this gas station? It's our Davis County representative, Davis County citizens. It's citizens of Caseville that are gonna stop there. I question that some. And all the other service stations we have in Caseville, I think every single one of them sells alcohol, they probably sell tobacco, but I don't pay any attention because I don't, I don't use it. And, and I, I think it's less than you worry about, but I'm not, but I don't, I recognize your, your concern and your frustration for your kids, and so I don't, please, I don't wanna minimize that. I just think it's less. I, I had, I will say I had to chuckle when I read the pa, when I read the paper and talked about obesity because you're selling sugar. Well, where am I gonna get my donuts if I can? And I, and first thing, I said, "Shoot, I'd have to look in my pantry first and get rid of everything there." I, I, and again, that's, that's my terrible sense of humor. I, I, I think it'll end up, I would not want a gas station in my backyard, it's not there, but I've lived all over the country, and you very rarely find an on-ramp to a freeway that doesn't have a service station. I would think there would be one on the other side eventually if there wasn't a school already there, because there's usually one on both sides of the street for on-ramp and off-ramp. We will do what we can do. I've been to come-and-gos before, I've been, spent time in the Midwest, the different places. They're very well done. I mean, if you're looking for, for a place that's gonna be there, they do a good job. Yes, it's a convenience store that's gonna have lots of, well, they'll have my Monsters or they'll have the different fountain drinks, and hopefully they'll have Dunk-Ford Donuts. But, but they're, but they do a good job. It's, they're not junky. It's still in your neighborhood, and I, and I got that you wish it wasn't there. Anyways, that's, I appreciate your passion and what, the time you have, and we will do what we can do. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
Yeah. Okay, I'm long-winded. Here we go. I'm, you know, I'm a little disheartened by the applicant's response. Are you on the phone still, applicant? Are they still?
Yes, sir, we're still here.
Awesome, okay. So, I mean, were you able to hear the concerns of, of the neighbors and those who spoke, our citizens?
Absolutely, we heard most everything, few technology challenges, but absolutely.
Okay, so I guess my, my, I reiterate or ask, re-ask the question, is there, is there any comments you have with regard to some of their concerns?
You know, it's, it's tough, obviously being on the phone here, I really had hoped to be in person. The best I can do for you is tell you a little, little bit about come-and-go and who we are. We've been a family-owned company for about 60 years. We are currently on the fourth generation. Our CEO, Tanner Kraus. You know, we are a convenience store chain that's in 14 states. We employ a little over 5,000 people, and our goal is really, our purpose, it's stated, it's public, it's everywhere, literally, if you search for our purposes. We make days better by connecting with people. Our goal is to democratize healthy convenience. Honestly, we understand that life is hectic, but we still need fuel and we still need food. We lit, we just won an award in the last week for introducing a new food menu that is all about healthy, clean-label products. Our focus is on meeting the healthy striver in everybody. You know, our, our goal as a company is focused more on fuel, or more on food, excuse me, than anything else. We care about people. We employ more people full-time than any of our competitors. We offer benefits packages that are the same for an employee like myself or our CEO as an associate that is working in our stores. We want people to have healthcare. We want people to have a competitive wage. We want people to take this job very seriously. It's a passion of ours. 10% of all our profits go back to charities on a corporate level and locally. We've worked, we've just started the process of working with local charities to establish those. You know, we do have just one store so far in Draper, Utah. We have another 18 to 19 sites under contract. We view the state of Utah as a 60 to 70-store opportunity for us. We'll be from, you know, Draper, Murray, South Jordan, that area, all the way up through Ogden, West Haven, the whole, the whole area. We look forward to being partners with our local communities. We look forward to hiring locally. And generally, I mean, we try to be a positive force for everybody. Because we are still privately owned and privately held, we are able to make decisions that are for the benefit of people and our, just really for everybody, the communities that we serve. And so we're excited. Again, I can only reiterate that staff has been tremendous to work with. Melinda's team has been very thorough in what they've done. Again, as she mentioned earlier, this has been a well-thought-out, long process to get to this point. We have done our best to meet everything that staff has required of us, and will continue to do so. We're excited to be a part of Caseville. We do believe that the West Davis Corridor is gonna be a major traffic and financial driver for the city of Caseville, and we're excited to be a part of it. We identified that early as a wonderful partnership. And so, you know, we're here speaking just to a plaid of, a preliminary plat, and, and I'm happy to do what I can to answer questions outside of that. But again, we're, we're just incredibly grateful for all that staff has done up to this point and the care they've put into looking at who we are and what we're trying to do here. Hopefully that helps a little bit.
Kind of. The, I mean, the, from me listening to our citizens, the, the concerns that they were having were associated with, with traffic, with the children in the area, with the ingress, egress that may or may not be approved by UDOT. Mike's brought up a great point that we could require that, but they could come through and tell us no, and in that case, you would have all of these cars going through a neighborhood to come into one driveway entrance. There's also been talk of concerns with, with benzene. These are some of the things that I heard from, from them that I'm not quite hearing you address, and I know that, like, it is before us as a plot, you know, preliminary plat, but, but, you know, it's before us, so, I mean, we're a legislative body. And so, I guess from my standpoint, I don't hear you really answering any questions with that. Is, is, is it true that come-and-go is up for sale?
I will tell you that I'm not entirely sure how that's relevant to any of this. There is a very vaguely worded news article about many topics that came out through Reuters, but no, come-and-go is not for sale at this time. Again, we're a fourth-generation-owned family business, and we're doing our best to answer any questions that you all have specific to this preliminary plat. We understand that traffic is gonna increase in the area, and we are beholden to UDOT and city staff's guidance on all of that, and Melinda can hopefully attest to this, that we're willing to do whatever is required of us with those regards. of us with those regards. We want to be a good partner. We believe in, in, in safety. We believe in health. We believe in all these things. And so again, we're going to do everything that is required of us. And to the previous councilor's point, with regard to some of the stores that he's visited in the areas of the Midwest that we operate in, you know, we tend to, I don't even know if that's the right word. We go above and beyond wherever we can in every area. And so certainly we, we hear the concerns about traffic and such of that nature. And again, all I can state is that specifically with regard to the preliminary plat, we meet everything and we are more than happy to listen to staff and the council's guidance and to do whatever UDOT requires of us. More specifically, we hear what is said and, and we hold ourselves internally to the highest standard when it comes to health, safety, and environmental concerns.
So, am I allowed to keep talking?
Go ahead, Councilmember Adams.
So, would you guys consider going somewhere else in Kaysville? If, if there was an option?
We've looked at four different sites in Kaysville. We did a lot of due diligence, extensive due diligence. Ultimately, you know, before, and my job is the real estate side of it, Ryan's on the phone and talks to some of the more technical aspects, but we did a survey of what are allowed zoning uses, what future traffic patterns are going to be, where needs are in the city. And ultimately, at this point, this is an approved zone use in a growing area with a, it, it was the best spot for us to be. I'm actually looking at doing multiple sites in Kaysville. We like Kaysville a lot. This just happens to be the first one.
Okay. That's, that's all the questions I have for the applicant, but I do have some more questions, if that's okay.
Carry on.
So, Melinda, one of the, one of the concerned citizens, I think Blake maybe was his name, had a concern about the buffering, I believe, having to do with number 11 on our requirements. Yeah. Can you, can you answer, can you give me staff's answer to how that's been addressed?
Yeah. So, that question was sent to the mayor and council yesterday. The mayor did email that to me yesterday as well so that I could look at that. It's very appreciated. But our response is, what is proposed meets code. So, the general commercial zone requires a 20-foot yard buffer. And this is typically between the building, not the use of the property. The use applies to the whole property, but you, you have setbacks. And general commercial zone doesn't have a setback, but it has a requirement that there's 20 feet of yard between the residential zone, the residential lot, and the use of the building. So, what has been submitted in the preliminary site plans is a 20-foot landscaped buffer. There's a drive access through there. There's more landscaping and then there is the sidewalk that would lead a pathway into the building. All total, that's about 60 feet. So, I think that's more than adequate. It's three times what the code requires. There's also a portion in the subdivision code that requires a fence. The applicant is proposing a six-foot cedar fence and that would meet code as well.
Okay. You talk about code, it kind of brings me to my next question, which is why, why this is before us? I mean, it kind of, even your presentation before where it said, "We have to approve it." I, I don't understand that. Like, I don't understand why it's come to a legislative body that has to do anything. I mean, from a legal standpoint, why do we have to approve this, Nick?
So, you have legislative authority and as a city council, you have administrative authority and sometimes you exercise quasi-judicial authority. Preliminary plat is an administrative decision and you, as a city council, not you, but prior city councils, have made the decision that they want to make that administrative decision. So, you just haven't delegated that to a planning commission or to staff. But this is an administrative decision. This is almost as administrative a decision as can be made in land use, final plat being, or maybe a conditional use being slightly more administrative. But that's just how the code, it's called LUDMA, the Land Use Code of Utah is set up. And so that's why you're seeing it, is because you haven't delegated that to another body or to staff.
If I can also add on to that, Councilmember Adams, there is a bill the state legislature is considering right now that would prohibit subdivisions from coming before a city council. Our code currently states our process for preliminary plat goes to planning commission and then to city council. Final plat only goes to planning and commission. Because this is the process of checking boxes, it's not something that does need to come before the council. And actually, my preference would be that it not. The last city I worked for, they never saw subdivisions at the city council level. It was all handled through planning commission. I'm hoping that that bill will also have an ability to just have the subdivision process go through staff, because we don't want to have a bunch of citizens and neighbors who, who get frustrated because there can't be any influence to the process or to the approval. So, the, the council sets the laws and that goes through a public process. We'll have that on the next item where we're revising our mixed-use code, but the council sets those laws. And so, in theory, once those laws are in place, then staff goes through the checklist, the will of the council has been met by going through those items and assuring that they're compliant with code.
I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but at the same time, I, I don't like it. And so, I, I mean, from my standpoint, I, I feel like if it's here and it's before us, we should be able to make a decision. I, you know, that's frustrating to me and I know that that might change, but right now that's not the case. Like, we could make a decision. What if we said, "We don't want, we don't want that to be zoned commercial." I wish I knew what all of you moved into your houses thinking was going to go there. That's the, that's been my biggest question this whole time. Like, even you said, you know, gentleman said, you know, "I left the city," but, but you knew that was commercial. And so, I, you know, I mean, how did you? So, maybe you didn't look at, at the zoning in the area and saw that it was commercial. I, I did the same thing when I moved into my house on the west side. I came out in the winter and it smelled like manure and like a sewer. And I went and looked and sure enough, there was a sewer plant that's right by my house in West Kaysville. I had no idea. And so I complained to the HOA and sure enough, in the disclosures, it said, "There's a sewer plant right near your home, so it might smell like poop during the winter." I'm like, "Well, that would have been something that they should have mentioned to me maybe instead." And so, I understand your feelings and I don't know what, what the legal ramifications would be upon us as a council if we denied this.
So, if you denied this, the applicant would have legal recourse to appeal to, I would have to check the code, but either our appeal authority or to the district court. And if the district court or the appeal authority found that all those boxes had been checked, they would either, our ALJ, our administrative law judge, would either approve that, approve this plat, preliminary plat, or the district court would remand it back to you in order that you, that you subdivide the property, that you approve the preliminary plat.
Well, and I'm just going to add something really quickly to this. So, we, we did have this discussion, right? Because we're trying to see what can, what can we possibly do? And this is, this is the problem with doing something like that. The court could say, "Yeah, Kaysville City, you messed up. You have to approve this." And the applicant, so that is a legal process, it will cost the city money. At the end of the day, we'll still have to do it. Or the applicant could just say, "You know what? Fine, we'll just sublease it." And they can still get two uses out of their property. And so, as much as we think, "Oh, gosh, that's the answer. That would be so helpful. That would be great. That would stop it." It won't stop the project. And, and so, you know, it's, it's great and it would be nice if we could just say, "Oh, yeah, we, we just want to prove this." But, but we have had those conversations and we have gone through the process and we have looked at our code and we have looked at state code and we've looked at case law as well, to say, "Okay, case, could we win? Could we win?" And just say, "Yeah, this is, we don't want to do this." And the problem is, we, we won't win. I mean, okay, a court of law, you don't know 100%, but basically, case law supports the fact that we would not win. And the applicant could either take us to court, you know, sue us, or they could just say, "Well, that's fine. Don't, don't subdivide it. We're still going to do what we want to do. It's our property and we own it." And so, that is why it's frustrating. Now, you talked about what can we do to mitigate. We can, we can require a certain type of fencing. We can require some landscaping, which is already kind of included in our thing. We can, you know, we have asked the applicant, I mean, they said, they said to us that they want to be good neighbors and they want to build more, more gas stations in Kaysville. We can have conversations to them, with them. What else could you possibly do to, to mitigate some things that are valid concerns in your area? And so, that being said, the council can still obviously do what they want to do, but, but we have had those discussions to see what could possibly be. Councilmember, actually, Councilmember Oaks first. Okay. Councilmember Jackson.
Can I have some clar?
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Oh, well, okay.
Sure. Go ahead, Abby.
I just have some things to say. And often I don't speak very much from up here because my colleagues are so good at saying most of the things that need to be said.
No, it's because Councilmember Adams speaks so much.
However you want to say it. They're very thorough and I appreciate their perspective. And I guess on this, I just, a lot of things have, have really hit me today or this week or in this meeting. I see all the people here with their kids and I think, you know, if I weren't up here and this were my neighborhood, that would be me. I would be here and I wouldn't have gotten a babysitter. I would be here with my kids. And so I appreciate the effort that's been made on, on everyone, on, with everyone and especially, you know, the, to, to show us that you care, that you want to be involved, that you have concerns. In fact, this morning, or this afternoon, I guess, when I went to watch and observe the, the school pickup time, I had my kids with me and, and they thought it was great. They had a blast. But just some more thoughts. I've learned probably more about benzene this week than I ever knew was out there. And, and a lot has been said about those issues and a lot of issues. So, I'm going to kind of, I'm not really going to maybe say a lot about those issues, partially because they aren't necessarily about the plat, and also because they have been said, but just know that, that they are in my heart and I, and I have been thinking of them and considering them. And like the mayor said, I've been in meetings trying to figure out, is there anything we can do? What are the legal options? And, and, and I've probably lost sleep and gained gray hairs and, and then that's great. You know, that's what I'm here for and I don't have a problem with it. But, and it's kind of been brought up by some residents and, and the mayor. For me, I just wanted to talk about the things that we can do moving forward. So, this, this afternoon, when I saw the traffic, I definitely see traffic becoming a huge issue, especially with the West Davis corridor going in. People were able to cross the street because there was a line of cars stopping the entire westbound road. So, I mean, safe to cross because everyone's blocked up, not a great option. And so I can see that being an issue moving forward and I see that being something that all of us with, with the staff would be committed to, to working on. I'm not an engineer. I don't have the answers, but I know people who do. And, and as those things arise, or preemptively if possible, we'll look into them. And then I guess, and, and I may not be representing everything that's been said or everything I've thought about. These are just kind of the things that I wrote down right now. But I would definitely encourage everyone, as Councilmember Blackham said, to reach out to UDOT about, and to our, our state legislatures, legislators. They're the ones who set the, the code, the distance that you can sell alcohol from a school, the distance you can sell tobacco from a school, the safety regulations around gas stations. Those are state, unless I'm incorrect, those are, those are state-level things. And, and while we'll, we'll do what we can, a lot of that's been handed down to us. So, but yeah, as far as moving forward, I would just say, traffic issues, we'll work on property issues, as much buffering as possible and, and anything else that may come up. But definitely, please, I don't think our state legislators hear enough from their constituents and I think they would love to. So, reach out to your state legislators and especially reach out to UDOT and see, you know, let them know that you don't think it's acceptable for them to cut off access on 200 because it causes a safety issue. I mean, that is definitely within your right and of course, we'll continue to do that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson, go ahead.
Okay. I have a bunch of questions, but clarification on what you said, Mayor. If we deny the, of dividing this property, that doesn't necessarily open it up for a legal issue, does it?
Well, it does because, it does because we, and I'm not the parliamentarian or the attorney, Nick is, but my understanding is that we will violate our own, our own code, because we, they're, they're checking the boxes, what they've submitted fits and is allowed. And for us to say no to that means we've ignored our own rules. But I will let Nick speak to that. He's more eloquent.
You're exactly right. 100% right. There's no reason for, after staff's reviewed this, we can see no reason why we should deny this. And because it's an administrative decision and we have no reason, they've met our code, then we're, they're entitled to approval on it.
Okay. I was under the impression that if we try to stop them from coming to that location altogether, that would be a violation, legal violation, but not the decision to divide the property in half or in that third.
Both would be problematic.
Both would, okay. Okay. That's helpful for that clarification. So, I keep hearing that, that UDOT doesn't want access. This, the come and go cannot just have one access point on that residential road. That is so unacceptable in every way, shape, or form. I actually drove down there today and looked at it. It's actually a very large property. And my biggest concern was the, the access point on the 200 and how close it would be to the on-ramp. There is plenty of room and we own the road. And so I don't think it's up to UDOT. I think it's up to us to demand that there is an access point.
Right. Our intention would be to, if, if this gets approved, put it subject to access off of 200 North, because that is what currently we're allowed to do and that's how it's legally plotted right now.
Okay.
On point of order, though, if, if, if we make that as a, as a requirement and then UDOT changes it, does it come back to us then?
Well, UDOT can't change it.
They can. They can. They, they can. They have the power to condemn it or I would like to, to Nick to give me the legal terminology for that, but.
You're getting your, you're getting your work tonight.
I am indeed. There's a, there's a case that UDOT could make for exercising their power of eminent domain, condemning the property.
And what part, what portion of the property?
They could, they could purchase or they would end up purchasing basically what's called a grudge strip in essence, which is a very narrow piece of property that you control.
Like the park strip, basically? Okay.
Park strip is a perfect example if they own that. If, if that happened, then it would not come back to us necessarily for further approval. They would just, they would have to pay the property owner, UDOT would have to pay the property owner whatever they valued that access at.
Okay.
And the damage to the, to the, to the property and to the, to the project by limiting that access. They would have to make them whole.
I think we should speak to that as well.
Yeah. Now, follow-up to that, because if we do, so come and go will be on two acres. The other property is one acre. Technically, that other property needs an access in and out of that property. And so, would it be true that they would have to buy that entire one-acre property at the value plus that park strip?
That's the most foreseeable result.
Okay.
Is that by buying that grudge strip, they would then eliminate access for that, that, for this west lot? And UDOT would then be responsible to, to probably purchase that lot in its entirety because it, it would no longer conform to our code, because it wouldn't have access to a road.
Okay.
Go ahead, Melinda.
Yeah. So, I've been involved in right-of-way acquisition in, again, in previous work experience. So, yes, UDOT has the power of eminent domain and the process of exercising that power is what's called condemnation. So, the question isn't whether or not can they, because yes, they can. So, the question isn't whether or not can they, because yes, they can. They can condemn for a safety regulation. The question is whether or not they would. And, and what you're alluding to is, so, there's this federal regulation, there's state code that defines processes for condemnation, and they, anyone who is condemning a property is required to pay full market value to the property owner for the property that they are going to take. So, in this instance, yes, they would have to pay whatever fair market value is for the strip of land that they would purchase, and-
Add that acre as well?
Well, so, so I'll, I'll step through this. So, they would have to purchase, oops, sorry, they would have to purchase whatever, like a two-foot strip, pay fair market value for that. There's a process that they have to be, they meaning the property owner has to be explained all of their property rights, a, a very defined process they have to go through. One of those would also be what's called a right-of-way appraisal, very different from your appraisal that you get when you buy and sell a home. It's a right-of-way appraisal. UDOT has a pool list of individuals, firms that are certified to do right-of-way appraisals. That would come with items called cost to cure, which means if they took out landscaping, or they took out a fence, they would have to pay the property owner the cost to cure that taking. So, they'd have to pay for the fence, or they would have to pay fair price for the landscaping. There's also what's called severance damages. So, then they would have to pay the property owner severance damages for that loss of access that, that would, that they would take away by going through the condemnation process. And then, to your last question, yes, that would create that lot one, it would then be what we would call a legal non-conforming lot. Now, on land use, what that means is that it was legal at the time it was approved, but then it became non-conforming. So, they would have to also pay severance damages, or, well, and the fair market value for whatever those impacts would be to that property owner. I think that's getting pretty expensive, I don't know, but the question is, yes, or the answer is, yes, they can, but will they? And that's something that we don't know.
Okay. And to speak to that, too, as far as our, what we do tonight, that's a factor I'm pulling in as well. If we deny splitting that property, then does that allow for UDOT to more easily take that park strip and not owe anything or pay anything regarding that one lot, and then to deny that access? And that's really important to me, and so, it's challenging to weigh these things, because I want to make it hard for UDOT to, to take control of that and to not have access. And so, that's one thing that I'm really looking at closely. The 45-foot, it was mentioned that there might be a 45-foot sign, that's really concerning to me. Melinda, could you speak to that?
Yeah, and, and to just go back to your previous statement, yes, if we subdivide the property, that acquisition or that condemnation cost goes up, because as a single parcel, they would have frontage on a public road, and that's required to subdivide your property. If that acquisition took place, they would not have that frontage, and then that's when the legal non-conforming, and that's when the price that they'd have to pay to the property owner keeps on increasing.
Okay.
I think by, by subdividing it, you, you would, UDOT would incur drastically higher costs-
Higher prices.
To acquire that right-of-way in that property.
So, when you're talking about mitigation, what can the city do? This is something that we can do, and so, even though it seems like, gosh, you're just giving them what they want, it actually makes it harder for UDOT, UDOT to block that access, because it's going to be so expensive for them. Now, we can't predict what they're going to do, believe me, I wish we could. But, but to the point, it, it does, it does make it harder for them to do that, and we want the access to be off of 200 North, because we want to encourage cars to use that access. That's, that was, that was in our minds this entire time. So, I appreciate you bringing that up, it's a very, very good point. And-
Mayor, I think I'm ready to make a-
Hang on, you didn't-
Just a second.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The sign really isn't relevant, it's not relevant to this conversation.
Couldn't we, couldn't we, I mean, that's the one thing that we can do in the subdivision, is require certain things, right?
No.
No.
That sign requires a separate permit.
That, that would be, that would be a separate.
Yeah. And I just, since it was brought up tonight, we're all together, it would be nice to kind of speak about it.
Okay.
Because I wasn't aware that that, there was going to be a large sign, so I was curious.
So, I believe what they're referencing to is the preliminary plans, because this is a preliminary process. In those plans, they did submit a sign that shows a 45-foot height. In discussions, we initially concluded that the sign code that we have would only allow for an eight-foot monument sign. And we have previously presented to the Planning Commission a text amendment to increase that height allowance to mirror what is allowed on I-15. That would be 45 feet. The Planning Commission essentially remanded that back to staff and asked us to do more research on that, and part of that research was our conclusion that a 30-foot tall sign would be permitted. And that's because we do have a major street plan in our city code, it's in Title 8, 8, and that major street plan identifies three areas that are classified as a primary, or a principal arterial. It lists State Route 67. Now, that is the legacy highway numbering, and I am sure that initially, when the West Davis corridor was proposed, either continued that numbering, or the assumption was made that the Legacy North is what it was initially, initially called, would have that same number. So, what we would look to is probably correcting that error in the future, but what that then allows is that they could do a sign height of 30 feet. And I know this is counterintuitive, but the higher a sign is, the less likely you are to see it when you look out a window. The Maverick sign over here is 25 feet. I'm pretty sure the Maverick off of Parish Lane, where I drive by every day, is 25 feet as well. We also have provisions in our sign code for dimming. We have provisions in our sign code for how much brightness can, or not brightness, but, but what can be projected. And I think they would probably end up doing a sign similar to what's over here at the Maverick, and it would, they would be allowed to do 30 feet. So, I did discuss that in the Planning Commission meeting we had last week, but that, that is our conclusion after doing additional research. I also told the Planning Commission that because of that, I don't feel that it's necessary for staff to continue forward in trying to bring a text amendment. I think 30 feet is more than adequate. If the council disagrees with that, we're happy to move forward with that. But I will say this, I don't think we could get that text amendment in front of the city council prior to when the applicant will submit a building permit. And they are vested in the code once they submit a building permit. So, that's kind of a long answer to answer the question, but the applicant could receive a sign height of 30 feet, and that classification of the West Davis corridor would be a primary or principal arterial.
Can I add just one really quick follow-up?
Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
And last question. Thank you for the information. I, I would love just an eighth of sign, to be honest. And that's, I mean, these are people that live right next door, I think whatever we can do as a council, I think the buck stops with us, and we have to protect certain things within our city, and I think 30 feet's too high right there. It makes sense on I-15 to have a sign that big. This is not going to be an I-15, this is going to be a Highway 89-type situation. But my, my last question is, and Mayor, you mentioned this, fencing, landscaping, we can, you know, kind of man, demand certain things, at what point in the process, and maybe this goes to Melinda, can we do that? Because, I mean, the buck stops with us, and Councilmember Adams, you said it right as well, it's, if we don't do it, who will? So-
So, in this instance, the buck doesn't stop with you, it stops with the Planning Commission. So, our subdivision improvements required section, I think it's 1906, states, and I think it's number 17, no, 17, I think it is, that states that fencing would be required, and it states what those minimum requirements would be. And it does have a provision in there where the Planning Commission, not the city council, but the Planning Commission can determine incompatibility with uses. And the code states that the minimum height for a fence is six feet. So, the council could direct staff to ask the Planning Commission, when final plat is presented to them, if they would consider essentially-
An eight-feet masonry wall.
Defining that is a non-compatible use, and they could require-
Right.
And my recommendation would be a seven-foot masonry fence. Anything above seven feet, Councilmember Blackham will know this, has to go to engineering, and that's very costly. A seven-foot masonry fence would be very costly as well, could even be a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, that is one thing that the Planning Commission could do if they concluded that the uses were non-compatible.
Do we do that tonight, or do, when do we?
No.
Well, so- That would be final plat.
So, in the motion for the approval, you could ask that staff have Planning Commission consider that at the final plat level, but, I mean, a couple things. One, if Come and Go decided not to go through with the final plat, we wouldn't be able to impose that condition. Number two, the Planning Commission is meant to be a non-political body, they're not supposed to take direction from the council, they're supposed to give recommendations to the council. So, I think it would be inappropriate to put a condition on this that the Planning Commission put the fence in, but you could put a condition in the motion that states you would direct staff to ask Planning Commission to specifically address that item at the final plat approval.
And this would be a resident effort, you would want to talk to Planning Commission as well, so, okay. All right, thank you. All right.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Councilmember Blackham.
And, and then if there's more discussion, fine.
Got it.
I just think we need to get a motion out there. Okay, I would make a motion that we accept the preliminary plat for the West Gate Estates Commercial Subdivision located at 2356 West 200 North and 2368 West 200 North, with the conditions that they have access on 200 North, that Lot 1 has an access easement on the plat to Lot 2, not just the document, I want to see it hashed on the plat. And, and also that the staff is directed to the Planning Commission to address the sign with the neighbors and Come and Go.
Point of clarification, are you adding the ride-in, ride-out?
I'm going to leave the access up to staff and Come and Go. I mean, we've talked about the right, kind of pause on the, okay.
So, we have a motion, do we need to get a second before we have discussion on it?
Yeah.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, go ahead.
You know, I, we, we talked about a ride-in and ride-out coming off of 200 North, which is probably the best way, and that's how we recommend to do it, and I can include that in my motion. I just want to make sure we have access off 200 North. To me, that's the most important thing, because I think it's going to keep the cars off of, we, we have an 80-foot width right-of-way on 200 North, we have a 55-foot right-of-way width on the city, the residential street, which allows 35 feet of asphalt, basically, from back of curb to back of curb. With the 80-foot, we have at least, I believe, 78, or yes, about 79 feet, because you take six inches out for the curb on each side. So, to me, I try to picture Chevron with the only access being on 300 West, it just doesn't work. And so, I, I do think that there's a concern of having Lot 1 have access onto 200 North, so that's why I want that access easement from Lot 1 showing to Lot 2. So, whatever goes there, they can get on and off to 200 North, and they don't go into the neighborhood. So, that, that would be my motion, was to include the access.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second discussion? Councilmember Adams, go ahead, make your comment.
Yeah, I just, well, I just, I really want to deny, say nay on this motion out of principle, because it bugs me that it's coming to us like this and we can't say nay. But I'm a little bit swayed by the idea that this would, by saying nay, it would actually give UDOT, yeah, the ability to have that just be the one entrance. And so, I just want to explain to you guys that I'm pissed off, but I'm going to probably say yay on it.
Thank you for your very helpful comment. Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah, and just encourage all of you to reach out, we own that road, and it's our decision, and if UDOT wants to fight it, we can, we can have a legal discussion on that. But as, yeah, that's our decision. So, thank you, Councilmember Blackham.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hunt?
I didn't hear the last part of the motion, that staff directs the Planning Commission to, what was the last?
It was that staff asks.
Ask the Planning Commission to address the sign with the comments based from the neighbors.
Okay, so, did we say anything about the fence, or did we say that couldn't be in the motion?
I did not on the fence, because the fence is, if you want to make an amendment to my, for a taller fence of some kind, you can do that, but I don't know, Nick, our, I believe our ordinance says it has to be a six-foot screened fence.
Yeah, that's correct.
I don't know if we have the ability to, do we?
It is the Planning Commission that would have the ability to, to, and I'm trying to think of the right word, but to conclude that the uses between the residential and the commercial is non-compatible, and this, the code states that the fence has to be a minimum of six feet. So, they could require, if they felt that it was incompatible, the Planning Commission, the code specifically says, says the Planning Commission. So, at the next stage, the final plat, they could say, we feel like these uses are incompatible, and we want to put in, like I said, I would recommend a seven-foot masonry fence. I wouldn't go higher than that, because again, that's something that has to be engineered, and-
Very, very.
And I just, I wouldn't recommend that, but that's what I would recommend to the Planning Commission.
Could they put a chain-link fence in, technically, and be within code?
They could do a chain-link with the slats.
Yeah, that's unacceptable, so I wonder if we should.
What they've proposed already is a seven, or a six-foot cedar fence, a cedar plank fence.
But do we need to make a motion to kind of hold it?
No, that would not, that would not be appropriate, because it's the Planning Commission's discretion.
We can't direct them, but the residents can.
Oh, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Can we add that to encouraging the Planning Commission?
So, I think, I think the motion would be encouraged to ask staff to address that at the final plat process.
Okay, I will also include that the staff asked the Planning Commission, encourage them to install a seven-foot masonry fence. Do I have a sec?
Yeah, I'll second that.
So, was that a friendly amendment, or was that just sort of a, an adjustment to his friendly amendment? Okay, so we have a friendly amendment, we have a second, do we have discussion?
Can I also ask a question?
Oh, we have a friendly second? Yes, Councilmember Hunt?
Sorry, I don't know anything about landscaping or anything, so if this is a bad idea, but since we're, we're hesitant to maybe go above seven feet, can you do like a berman fence, or is that ugly? I don't know, okay. I just was wondering if that is an option also, and-
We could look at that.
Okay.
We could look at that, but my gut is telling me that's probably not something we could require. Now, just because we can't require something doesn't mean we couldn't ask them to do it, but if they said no, we can't force their hand.
Bed check on that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So, we have a friendly amendment, we have a friendly second, let's go to vote. Councilmember Oaks.
Aye.
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 Okay, so, this passes. Neighbors, residents, thank you for your input, thank you for your comments, thank you for being here. I appreciate you listening to this whole discussion, I hope it was a little bit helpful. Talk to the Planning Commission. Talk to the Planning Commission. You can definitely reach out. I mean, you can always reach out to the applicant.
I mean, it is Kaysville. I think they want to be a good neighbor. I hope they're listening. I hope they're making notes. I hope that they understand that this is our community that they're moving into, and we do want them to be a good neighbor. And it is a permitted use. We understand that. But sometimes you need to go above and beyond to make things work just a little bit better. From the sounds of them, it sounds like they're willing to do that. I mean, there's going beyond, beyond. But there's also trying to be good neighbors and do a few things that might cost them.
Okay. Thank you. Reach out.
And I was handed a paper that said, would he, meaning Josh and Ryan, I'm assuming, meet with neighbors? I sent them a text and asked them, and they said, we're not opposed to having, to explain our development. We just want to be in a controlled setting. So I think they're willing to meet with neighbors. And I think that's something that.
What's a controlled setting, do you think?
Well, you know, I think they just would want to ensure that there was civility. I mean, that would be my guess.
So Melinda, this is Josh, and I'm still here. Counsel and mayor and citizens, thank you for your time. Yeah, we're always open to meeting with neighbors, with the community that we're about to be a part of. The only thing in that is like, let's do it at chambers here, as opposed to like, on a tailgate on the side of the road or something like that.
We can accommodate that. How would you like us to set that up, Josh?
We can work with Melinda. We, again, I cannot reiterate enough that staff has been over the top with their communication and great. And so Melinda can facilitate that. I travel to Salt Lake two to three weeks a month. We spend time there. We have local engineers, and I'll make sure to bring the appropriate parties with me. Again, we really want to make sure that we are here to answer any questions that we can and really just put people at ease to the best of our ability. We appreciate, you know, the laws and the rules that are in place, and we're doing our best to navigate through those. But again, we'll keep moving forward on this front, but we'll be happy to meet for, meet with staff, council, mayor, and citizens to just have a nice chat. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll set that up. Okay, our next item is an ordinance amending Title 17, Chapter 27 of the Kaysville Municipal Code Regarding Mixed Use Zone District Overlay. This is good stuff, guys. I'm just kidding. Okay, go ahead, Melinda. Thank you. Will you present this?
So I think the easiest thing for this would be for me to just pull up a draft of the ordinance and kind of go through section by section in a general way. You all received in your packet a red line of the ordinance changes and then also a clean copy. So let me pull that up and drag it over to our screen. And also, I'm going to close the go-to meeting. So, all right. Okay. So we've had one mixed-use project come through to City Council in January. And the, one of the things about writing code is that you never know those flaws in your code until you take a project through your code. My experience, I have had several mixed-use zoning codes, several mixed-use projects in other communities. And after looking at this the initial time, I realized that there were some things that I would prefer to change and do differently. Going through this process with the Flint Street project, I think highlighted some of the other deficiencies in the code. So also in my experience, I think mixed code is one of the most difficult things to get right. And so, you know, no negativity towards anyone in the past that worked on this code. It just is a really difficult thing to get right. And so one of the things I have tried to do then is to build in a little bit more flexibility to the code, but also with some upfront expectations, so that we have an applicant that would know what we're expecting from them, but also give the council the ability to end up with a project that they would like to see in our community and one that would be successful. So, minimize that just a little bit more. So this purpose statement, I've just, I think wordsmithed it a little bit. This first section really is just trying to convey to an applicant everything that they need to bring forward so we can process their application. Everything here is, I mean, essentially, I've rewritten that, made it, I think, a more strong requirement. Also, I added in all city-approved studies and plans. There may be an occasion where we look at doing a small area plan. I could see that for our main street. We would want to make sure then that not only do they bring forward a project that's compliant with our general plan, but we would bring that forward to any other plans that would maybe apply directly to that area under consideration. We want to make it absolutely clear upfront that any projects within the mixed-use zone have to be accompanied by a development agreement. And that development agreement has to have sufficient details for the council to understand what they're approving. So again, I'm just wordsmithing this. And it initially was in a paragraph form, but I've lined this out so that it's easier for us to understand and the applicant to understand. I've changed just some of the wording. One of the things I've added is that we may require a traffic study. And there could be projects like the one we mentioned earlier, where it's, you know, two-story office, three residential townhomes. We probably wouldn't require a traffic impact study on that, but other projects, we would want to see that before bringing that in. So circulation and parking study as well. One of the things that has really become apparent through COVID and a little prior to that, but curb management and parking and circulation is more important than ever. We have Uber, we have Uber Eats, we have Amazon deliveries daily, we have DoorDash. And so we want to make sure that there's adequate parking and adequate circulation. We also want to present to the council the number of units, the building square footage that's proposed, and site and concept plans as well. So this is where we kind of start getting into the portion of code that is very difficult to, to define in code, because the mixed-use projects really are so specific to the exact site. Any mixed-use overlay would be a rezone, essentially. The code previously has allowed that in the RM zone, the general commercial, as well as the light industrial. And it defines some of the expectations as well. There were ratios of how much commercial to residential use that was required. First and foremost, I've changed what we have listed in the permitted uses. In the RM zone, it makes sense to me that the first permitted use would be multifamily dwellings. Also, I think we would want to have the cell of beer at a Winger's or some other type of limited restaurant. I think we would want to have a restaurant be a permitted use. That is listed right now as a conditional use in our code. But one of the things I would like to do in maybe the long-term future is to push some of those permitted uses or conditional uses into permitted uses so that we streamline the process for not only staff, but also the businesses that are coming in. Same with the liquor. So if it was a restaurant, bar, combination, amusement and entertainment facilities, I've reworded that, but clarified that. And then motels or hotels. I think that is something that makes a great mixed-use project. I think that's something that we don't have in our community and something that the council would want to consider having as well. Trying to define that, again, that ratio of mixed use to residential, or commercial to residential use, I'm essentially saying here that we're going to require that in a development agreement. And our minimum guidelines include, hey, we want ground floor commercial on all buildings that front arterial and collector streets. And we want a minimum of the combined total square footage for all buildings to be commercial. The commercial is what really kind of drives the, I think, the vibrancy of a project. And, but going back up to this, where, you know, the final, the final ratio of that will be included, or approved by the City Council in a development agreement. There may be a case where we say, look, 28% is close enough. There may be a case where we say, look, 30% isn't enough. We want to see 40%. And the council has that flexibility with how I have drafted this. I also wanted to make it clear that parking is not counted in that total for commercial space. We don't want somebody to just come in and pave a giant asphalt C and consider that as their commercial requirement. We actually want the business. We want the business and commercial space to come in. And so another thing, as determined by the development agreement, buildings may be required to be built before, at the same time as residential development. This is a phasing issue. And essentially, what you want to ensure is that we get those commercial buildings as well as those residential buildings. But what often would be the case is you'd build that residential because that's really your money maker, but that commercial gets shoved off to the side and kind of forgotten. So we want to make sure that we have the ability to require that upfront. Essentially, what I just went through with you on the RM zone is repeated through the next two sections, which is general commercial and city center commercial, and then the light industrial. So some of those uses are just a little bit different because they are different zones and have different uses in the existing zoning code. One of the stipulations are, one of the uses I have added in specifically with general commercial and city centers, motels and hotels. We do have, I mentioned earlier tonight, we have a couple of applicants that have been waiting for this mixed-use code to be finalized and approved. One of those applicants believes he can bring a motel or a hotel to the city. And that would be something the council would want to consider, because that's some additional tax revenues with transient room tax. And we want to be able to give the council the opportunity to consider that if it comes forward.
My only concern with that, I realize we don't have any really, oh, we don't have many, but it would be to limit it in certain areas of the city. So how would we be able to do that if this was just part of the mixed use? Would it just depend on parking and all of those things? And the site would have to be big enough? Or is there a way to limit it to certain specific areas?
So because, that's a great question. But because this action that the council would take would be a rezone, this is where the council actually has full discretion. And you have the ability to, you could require additional landscaping. You could require a certain type of landscaping. You could require anything above and beyond what the code states, because this is fully legislative. Now, that doesn't mean that a developer wouldn't say, look, that's too much, and we're going to walk away from the project. But that's their discretion, as well as the council's discretion. So this is really the one instance in land use that the council can kind of wave a magic wand and say, yes, we like this, no, we don't. We'll approve this, and we won't approve that.
And I just want to caveat that just briefly. I think it's a combination of the rezone and the development agreement. In a typical rezone, we would just default to the code, and we don't have that magic wand. But Ms. Greenwood's right. The way this is written with the rezone and the development agreement, we do have a lot more flexibility.
Councilmember Jackson, did you have a question?
I don't like motel being in there. I don't think we should have any motels in our city. I might consider a hotel in a certain location, but a motel? I don't know. I just.
What does the M do?
It makes it one level.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
And it would be more of the, like, the less expensive, probably. Yeah, motel sex. I just, I don't know. That's just my thinking.
I have a question, a suggestion. So are you saying that we've got applicants waiting for us to get this? I'm just wondering, do we want to perhaps postpone this discussion? Because it might be a long one, and it is getting late. And we have another, council, what do you think about that?
I'd say we postpone the power.
I mean, Melinda, unless we have something pending right now.
I can say we're about halfway through. The other half of the ordinance, I think, will flow more quickly. But it's the council's prerogative. I'm happy to do this at the next meeting.
You want to wait? What do we think, council? Do we want to wait?
I have some questions, but they're not going to take long.
She's only halfway through.
Halfway through, questions?
I can be more brief. I mean, if you've all had a chance to read through the red lines and the clean copy, I mean, I can just end my presentation right now and just take questions.
I just have a concern that if we agree to this, then will we, could we find ourselves in a situation like with the come and go, where we can't say no if it falls within that zone?
That's where this is different.
This is legislative.
Okay.
Since it's a rezone, anything would be a rezone. It would come before us.
Okay.
So we're not stuck with it?
It's a good point, though, because that's why, that makes you a lot more comfortable having looked at this. It's like, well, it's still subjective.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make that clear.
This section right here essentially gives, I mean, I'm not going to say a blank check, but it really allows the council to have full flexibility in saying, no, we don't like this, and we're not going to approve it. So this is, again, essentially a rezone request. The council can deny it. I would hope that before we get to that point, that staff wouldn't go through the length of bringing forward a project that the council wouldn't approve. But again, that's an applicant's prerogative. When they pay a fee, we will process their application.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we, okay, are we, I think that we've read through it. I know I have. Have we read through this? All right, then let's ask some questions. And let's move forward. Are you okay with that?
I have a question.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah. Getting a lot of speaking time in tonight. So I read through it earlier, and there was a part that kind of scratched out the storage units. And I would like that to be put back in, maybe in a different area, or just to state strongly, no storage units.
Yeah, we did talk about that earlier. And one of the reasons why I pulled up the Word document is, you know, we could explicitly prohibit storage facilities in the zone. If that was, you know, if we got three head nods up there, I'd add that in, and you can make a motion at the end to approve as discussed. But that's something that we could easily add in.
So how would I say that? A motion to, when it comes to that point?
I mean.
I think at this point, Ms. Greenwood understands. And if you just said with the addition of the.
Items as discussed.
Prohibited uses would be.
Okay.
Within a mixed-use zone overlay, right, only? We're not just, we're not saying where there's a moratorium on storage units in the city.
Right. But our general commercial zone and our city, or city's.
Light industry.
Center commercial zone does not allow storage facilities. So there's also a provision in the code that says the uses will be allowed as that base zone allows. So because they are explicitly prohibited in those base zones, they would not be allowed in the overlay. But if you want to make doubly sure, then we can add that in as a prohibited use.
I would like to have the option, because I think they are appropriate in some areas. And where this is legislative, I think we could look at it on a case-by-case basis. But that's just my suggestion, that we allow it as an option. So we don't necessarily prohibit it. But then we can look at different developments. It might be appropriate, and it might not. But there is a huge need for them, and they are popular in certain areas. So that's just, what do you think about that?
I think it said in there previously, though, no storage units.
They're actually green.
They're actually green.
And that was kind of taken out. And I just want to put back in.
Yeah, because I think how it was done earlier is that the uses were pasted from the, from the general commercial zone, which explicitly prohibits storage facilities. So again, like, the way our land use code, we have a provision that says if a use is not defined as permitted or conditional, it's not allowed. And so, but again, going back to that, you know, somewhat of a blank check, I think that would give flexibility for the council to, to consider options that might include storage facilities. Mr. Mills and I have had conversations about this and we do feel like it is a lot more straightforward to stick to the uses as they are listed, which is one of the reasons why we're adding motels and hotels and/or just hotels, whatever the preference of the council is. Because it's one thing to veer from side, you know, setbacks or landscaping requirements. It's another thing entirely to veer away from uses. So, you know, storage units, it's a fairly benign use. There's not a whole lot of traffic. It sits there, doesn't do much, but it also chews up a lot of property and doesn't bring in a lot of revenue or vitality to the, the area. So I think that's why they're not allowed in the general commercial zone, but, but there may be an appropriate location for that.
But they are allowed under the light industrial, right?
Correct.
Which is a zone that we do, we do have in the city.
Yes, yes. So they are allowed through light industrial.
Point of order, do we need to make a motion to extend our meeting? Yes. Would someone like to do that? We're going to go beyond 10.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion to extend. We have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Adams.
Nay.
Okay.
Just because I can.
Do you want, should I, you want to go home?
Yeah, I want to go home. No, you can say whatever you want.
Aye. I don't want to do this twice.
Councilmember Jackson.
Oh, rebutting, aye. To stay, right?
Yes.
Are there three ayes?
There's one, two, yes.
Okay, nay.
Okay. Motion passes and we will, we will power forward. Power on. Okay.
Now, can I ask?
Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Blackham.
The only questions I have, and it was just on, just on one of the deals where it talked about the traffic study.
Uh huh.
And I was wondering why that was public works and not the city engineer. Just a question.
Well, so the, the city engineer falls underneath public works. So we, I could change that.
Okay, I didn't know he was, I didn't know he fell under public works. I thought the city engineer was.
He does a lot of work in community development, but technically he's an employee of Josh, of public works. So that's why I put that. We could be more specific and say.
Because it just seemed more appropriate for a city engineer to ask for a traffic study when we're developing on private ground.
Sure. And we could change that.
I don't care.
I also thought, I mean, so currently, our public works director is also a PE. He's an engineer, so.
But that won't always be, probably.
No, may not be.
No. And then the other one I had was, and John and Tammy, I mean, Councilmember Adams and Mayor Tran can recall, the whole reason that we put the 50% in and the 30 was because we realized that the mixed use was the overlay zone. So, but the underlying zone was the actual zone. And so we wanted to make sure that the heavy part of the development was on the underlying zone and the mixed use did not interfere with that because now what I see by doing this, I'm going to, I know what I'm going to see. I'm going to see 60%, 70% residential and 30% commercial in everything that gets proposed. No question. I used to have an issue with that, probably, but anymore, I don't know. But if there was some way that we can assure that the commercial is on the main floor, which I think this does say that it has to be that way. And then a clarification, like when they showed that plat earlier today and they're going to ask for the mixed-use zone, where they have separated those into separate lots, they have to meet that requirement on each lot, the way I understand it. Because they are separately and they can be separately sold. So you could violate the ordinance by selling Lot 3 when Lot 4 had this. So I would say, my interpretation would be that if Lot 3 wants three townhomes, they have to have a minimum of at least 30% commercial there, too.
Sure. So I'll explain my interpretation and then I don't know if Mr. Mills wants to weigh in. But to me, a mixed-use overlay applies to a project and that could be a number of, of different parcels. But once that project is approved and that stamp of, you know, the approval goes through the city council, we would record that development agreement against all of the properties within that zone. So there could be instances, for example, that, so let's say we had a mixed-use project that, that brought forward a Trader Joe's. They don't like to own property. They want to lease. So in that instance, having one parcel would work. But let's say there's another entity that wants to come forward and the two uses, but the business model for a secondary use is that they want to own the property and the ground, you know, the ground below their building. So I would consider that as an entire project and not, not necessarily applicable to each individual parcel. And, and if that's something that's not clear, that we could add that to the code, but that would be my recommendation.
That would not, that would not be clear to me and I don't want to be in that battle because the whole intent is if, if it's a separate piece of parcel, in my mind, they can sell it. And it can have different owners and not be held to the same standard because it's a plat. It's like two people buying different lots in a subdivision. You can't tell a person on Lot 1 what their house has to look like on Lot 2 unless you have. So that's my biggest concern. I don't want to see in a general commercial zone where we're expecting to see what we had was 50% commercial, now it's down to 30% commercial, which I think works because I understand as long as we can get the main floor commercial and we get the two floors above that, that works out to be 60 and, you know, 60 and 30 or close to it. And I get that.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, so I'm just concerned that I believe, I interpret it, that if they want to do a mixed-use zone overlay, it should be, every parcel needs to comply or they need to do somewhat of a condominium plat project or something similar. Otherwise, I can see them doing all of the commercial, a four-story in one area, getting in a mixed-use overlay and just throwing 70% residential on the other lots and selling them off and they're not really a mixed-use zone.
So we could also address that through a mechanism in the development agreement that stipulates that we would record it against the property and we could also put deed restrictions in place. We could spell that out in code to give a little bit more comfort level if that may be the expectation. But again, that would be, I think, very project-specific because it may make sense in some instances to have different parcels, but have the overlay applied to the entire project versus an individual property.
I mean, this was new to us and the intent was to be more restrictive on the commercial side and let, so that we were sure that we were going to get the commercial because we knew that every developer that came in was going to propose the commercial as a secondary thing to get as much residential as they could. And I think we were trying to protect that. That's why it was the 50 and the 30. So I don't know where to go from here.
Well, in your, and also like in your analogy with the Trader, with Trader Joe's, for example, they could, they could subdivide. Are you saying that you would be concerned that it would be turned into two plots or that they would divide it and want to sell one?
I think that's Councilmember Blackham's concern.
I know, but you're, but you're, what?
So Trader Joe's doesn't like to own the land.
Right, right. But what are you saying? Like, you're saying that in the situation where, give me an example of where this wouldn't, where the restriction of saying 50, 30 for actual lots is a bad idea.
You mean applying the 50, 30 to each individual?
Right. That's what I think he's asking for. And I'm just wondering, because I want to understand what you're saying with, like.
So I think you would want to consider the project and not the properties. And, and it's, it's the, the project that applies to all of the parcels and the project includes zoning. It includes all of the restrictions that we put in that development agreement, but they can be separately owned. We have, we had in the Flint Street project, in our development agreement, a portion that says this can be assigned to someone else so they could sell the project, but it has to get city approval before we do that. So it, there's instances where it may make sense to do that and there's instances where it may not. I just would be concerned that we're limiting opportunities or creating situations where a mixed-use project isn't going to be successful. And I think at the end of the day, all of us want a successful project. We don't want some project that's going to, I mean, you know, one of the classic mixed-use projects that, that failed was Gateway. They're revitalizing that, but for some reason, that wasn't executed well. It failed within, you know, 10 years. We want to ensure that we have the flexibility in our code to have the highest probability. Yeah, well, exactly. We want to have the highest probability of our projects being successful.
See, and I guess that's, the perfect example was that Lot 3 and 4. I mean, literally, if they do what they're talking about doing, they shouldn't even do a mixed-use pro, it should just be general commercial on the corner, Lot 4, and Lot 3 should be an RM zone or whatever. And so I think that's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned that they're going to come in with their mixed use and say, okay, we've put our 33 or 30% commercial in, we're going to do all this other, and then we're going to sell it off. We have no control over it. We have nothing. So really what you have is you have a commercial piece of land that doesn't meet the mixed use and you have a residential piece of land.
Is there a way to make it project-specific so that?
I don't know.
So that, yeah, like, I mean, in that case, if you were selling, if they were to only do the corner lot, that's one project. And then as soon as, if it's presented by somebody different or whatever, it's another project. Meaning, like, if they came as a whole project together, then that's something we could consider.
So that's why I'm saying, in my opinion, that's why each parcel has to meet the mixed-use portion. That's why I wished it was in there, to say each parcel has to meet the mixed-use requirement.
Because what you're saying is that those guys, 3 and 4, they should just merge it to one lot and do 30, 50 or just.
Or they should do mixed use on the corner and mixed use on the other one somehow. But I don't think there's any way we're going to get the commercial on Lot 3.
So I think Councilmember Blackham raises some really good concerns and that's certainly a way we could write the code. Kind of an analogy to what Ms. Greenwood's saying that we do frequently and we're very comfortable with is a residential PRUD overlay where we take all those parcels in a neighborhood and we sell those to individual homeowners, but the overlay sits on all that property. And I think that's what Ms. Greenwood's kind of proposing as her, her understanding of it. We could certainly write a code that did what Councilmember Blackham says where you have, it all has to be one parcel, but we frequently have neighborhoods where they get density bonuses, they get other kind of perks, and we lay that PRUD overlay on it and they have to maintain certain amount of open space. And we do that through notes on plats and the way it's planted and the, and other mechanisms. And I think we could do something similar with a mixed-use overlay. And if we think about it similar to a PRUD overlay, I think we could conceptualize them similarly.
Yes, and that would prevent what Councilmember Blackham's saying because if you came in and did it and then you wanted to sell the, the other property, you'd have to still abide by the same 30, 50 because it's a totally different project.
Right, even though they're two parcels.
Right, right. Separate owners.
You have the overlays.
Totally separate.
For the project.
You're prohibited from adding additional residential or whatever the restrictions are.
Yeah, I like that.
Councilmember Hunt, go ahead.
So much of this mixed use is, is very site-specific. Councilmember Blackham, I absolutely agree with you. I think in the instance of the MCW, the thing that would make the most sense for them is to rezone that southern lot to RM.
Yeah.
In the instance of the mixed-use project that Holland, or yeah, the Holland Development wants to propose, he believes he can bring a hotelier to our city. I think the hotelier will want to own the land. Holland Development would want to own the residential portion, but that would be applied to the entire project.
Right. That's what we want.
And, and we can.
So would we do a condominium plat in that case?
No, I think, I think we could just do a regular subdivision plat, but it just applies to all of it in its entirety. And so if there were to be a change in ownership, right, and, and if they wanted to change any portion of the project, they would have to come back and amend the development agreement through the city council.
That makes more sense because then, then you could literally in the development agreement say, this development agreement pertains to all 10 acres.
Correct.
And you cannot, you can't change. So if somebody tried to sell off an acre and change it, they could not until we amended the development.
Correct. Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Hunt.
So I'm following that mostly. And I guess I've, I love the mixed-use overlay. I want to continue to work on it. I don't, in light of things that have been brought up, I don't feel like I am, I don't, I would like to work more on it in addition to this meeting. So I don't feel ready for a positive motion, but I don't want to put it off for a long time. And I'm wondering if people would be okay, if you would be okay with me making a motion to table it just until the next meeting, if possible. I mean, I know we kind of said we wanted to keep going, but I'm, I'm really starting to.
So we get to rehash this again?
Well, no, I feel like this part's been resolved, but I'd like to answer a few more questions that I think could be better answered.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Can I make a motion to table this until the next?
You can.
I would like to make a motion to table this until the next.
So we have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Blackham.
Aye.
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 But I do have to say, Melinda, awesome. Thank you. This is a lot of work.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so like.
Pertaining to the motion, it passes.
And it was an easy read. I mean, it, yeah, thanks.
You have an English major and a dog minor.
A career's worth of writing staff reports.
You're very good at it.
It's a big jump for our city.
Okay. This brings us to our last item today.
Yay.
Come on down. A resolution amending Keysville City's consolidated fee schedule for fiscal year 2023. I'll turn the time over to our Power Director, Brian Johnson, and then we have two people signed up to speak.
Mayor Tran, council, thanks for, for having us here this evening to address power rates. It's definitely a very large concern of ours, as well as I know it is of yours. It's no, it's no secret, we're facing some pretty crazy dynamics right now that we've never, we've never had to deal with in the power industry. We've, we've got increased high demands with electric vehicles. The world is going away from combustion and is starting to go electric and it's putting a lot of strain on our, on our systems. We have high-density housing, more businesses and all, and all the above. And then we also have the government that's putting coal mandates and restrictions on us, which is reducing our resources and squeezing, squeezing the juice out of what we have, our tank that we have to draw from for our power supplies, which is causing us to have to, to reach to the open market and dip into higher rates, which is, which isn't going away. We're not getting, we're not getting those resources back. Earlier, there was a comment that, you know, there's fluctuations in different pricing in fuel, things like that. We do see some of that in our market with natural gases. There's a lot more combustion and, and generation of power through natural gas. And we will see some fluctuation because of the prices of natural gas, but the fluctuation is not going to be the same as what we can compare to gasoline that we put in our vehicles. Those resources are still there. We're losing resources that are not going to come back. We won't, we won't get them back. They're gone forever. And it's, it's. And, uh, it's, it's causing, um, some concern. We, we did get the Pace Nebo, um, back on, online. Things are looking good there. We're hoping to see, you know, the tail end of, of this, uh, this season where we draw and depend heavily on them, return back to some normalcy. But with that being said, we're still above, uh, typical market prices. We've sent out, we've sent out some, uh, some analysis, uh, from 2020 to 2022. You know, in 2020, we were 6.1 cents, uh, purchasing on kilowatt hour. Then we went to 6.9 and then last year we were at 8.7. Now, I know that we had two uncharacteristic months last year in 2022. And so I went ahead and removed those two months and so I could compare without them. And.
That's when the Nebo went out?
Yep, that's when Nebo went out. Yeah. And, uh, so you take those, you remove those two months, uh, into the, into the equation and we still went up, uh, to 7.9 cents on average of all of last year with those two highest months removed. And so, um, with that, that's still, that's still, uh, one cent a kilowatt hour higher than we saw last year, which is 14% increase. And tonight, we, we're obviously have a long-term, um, concern that we need to address with, with all of this. We have operation costs that are still going up. Costs of materials have maintained higher prices. We have a, a system that needs a lot of attention. A lot of our underground is 40, 50, 60 years old. Our wire's only rated for 50 years. We're starting to see burnups and it's needing to be addressed. We have high, high, uh, ticket items, um, with substations, um, that, that are due, especially with the increasing demand that we need to meet and to be able to provide and, and meet those demands with our infrastructure. So there's a lot, there's a lot to take into consideration. We reached out to, yesterday I had Bruce reach out to all of the UAMPS members and he asked them, how many of you, uh, amongst the whole entire UAMPS members, how many of you have already, um, already proposed or not necessarily proposed, but how many of you have already increased rates at your city? And, uh, would you see about 80%, is that what you said it was? About 80% of them raised their hand. And then he says, Kay, let me do a follow-up question. Out of you, out of that, the rest of you, how many of you plan on doing another increase or doing an increase, uh, this year if you haven't already? 100% of the UAMPS members raised their hands. This isn't, this isn't something that's, um, that's just Kaysville. This is, this is industry-wide. Uh, we're seeing it all over the place. Rocky Mountain Power can't tell you what they're doing, uh, at the moment because they, they go before and do their reviews, I believe, starting in March, April, and where they will determine, um, what, what effects they will have. I will tell you that if we do a 5% increase right now with the intent that we will reevaluate our rate structure later on this year to determine what specifically is the best scenario under these unique circumstances for the future. The 5% increase will help, uh, help stop, or help mitigate, mitigate the bleeding, but it won't stop the bleeding. We will, we will still, uh, you know, 5% is not enough. The power, uh, the power advisory board, um, uh, they, we went, uh, met last time and, uh, several of them, after discussing for an hour, hour and a half, several of them felt that 5% wasn't even enough and that I should push for 10. Now, with the, still with the intent of later this year, readdressing, um, our rate structure. Just for way of information, some of the, some of the ways that, uh, some of the cities have, uh, been restructuring, uh, for later on, there, there's one way that I just barely came in informed of that I didn't know that some cities were doing. But there's a power purchase adjustment clause where we will actually fluctuate our costs with the, with the, with the rates, uh, power purchasing rates. And that's, that gets sticky. That gets really tricky how you would formulate that and how you would do that. But it's something I'm looking into on how cities are making that work. And if that would be a fit, there's also tier restructures, demand restructures and time of use. So there's, there's a lot that we're trying to consider and take into effect of what would be best for Kaysville. But, but that still doesn't get rid of the fact that right now, where we sit, as we sit now, we, we, we need, just to keep maintaining, we need an increase. And that, that increase of 5% right now in Kaysville, the average resident in Kaysville uses 955 kilowatt hours per month. If you do the calculations, that would raise the, the average of 955 kilowatt hours a month to about $4.50. They pay more on their bill. It actually comes out slightly below that, but I rounded it up at $4.50. So just to give you a little bit of an understanding of, of what would be taking place there. And so those, you know, we've, we've already kind of gone over some of the numbers. I know Dean sent out some of the, uh, some finance, uh, information and that kind of stuff. And so, but that's, that's our biggest concern right now. Um, we're hoping that, uh, 5% will, will be enough that we won't have to dig too deep into our reserves before we're able to, before we're able to come to a, a, um, conclusion to, to what would be best or determination, I guess, to what would be best for Kaysville and their current situation. It'll be interesting to see what a lot of other cities, uh, end up, uh, doing as well. But what I can tell you is, uh, you know, out of every single member on UAMPS, they all are seeing the same thing and they're all seeing that, that this is a necessity. And, uh, I, I, I personally think it'd be a huge mistake. It's gonna set us up for having, having to have even a greater jump down the road rather than something that will help us maintain now and, and be able to do something maybe a little bit more minimal later and not have to be so drastic later on.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, we have two people signed up to speak. We'll turn the time over to them first and then we will go to questions. Thanks, Brian. All right, so we have the Starkys. Val. You have three minutes.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Val Starky, 573 South 350 East. First. I looked at your faces during the big group meeting. I appreciate your attention. These people appreciate your attention. Sometimes the city is not an easy day. We understand, but thank you. Secondly, my purpose here is as a former power engineer with a mother who is on oxygen. She's on Rocky Mountain Power, but now my perspective on electricity is different. Okay? I'm a fourth witness in support of Alan Farnes, Power Commission Chair, Brian Johnson, who we just listened to, and John Palmer, who is a professor, power engineer, and has given the power department some comments, okay? Supporting, building up and checking out the infrastructure. I, we're just learning about how that's going and it looks like there's good progress. Regarding the 5%, Brian just made a comment. We really need more than five. My plea is to make it 10, okay? Because one, we haven't had increases for about five years, okay? Everybody knows that. People here, they know the news. They know we're in trouble or why should we take any money from reserves? Okay? So my, my petition is to, to think about the value of what we can do by making a really good choice. Not worse. We know that Kaysville power is really critical, okay, to some people. It's really. Why not make an excellent choice and choose a 10? Okay? We have a lot of infrastructure that needs more support. Brian just talked. And my last point is, I believe the city or somebody in Kaysville, maybe in the Clipper, somebody needs to explain so that people can read, here's what's going on. Here's what you need to know about. Okay? So if somebody took an action to go put something out so that people could get the picture, there would be no questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great suggestion. All right, Alan. Alan is a member of our Power Commission.
All right. So I am Alan Quigney. I'm on the Power Advisory Board and I live at 1048 Brookhaven Drive and I'm moving to 1471 Shadowwood Drive in Kaysville. Um, finally.
Staying in Kaysville.
Staying in Kaysville. Never leaving again. Um, to reference some of the stuff we talked about in our last Power Advisory Board meeting, in 2016, there was a study done and I'm, I'm sure this has been brought up before. And they suggested that our rates increase 4.5 to 5.5% per year for five years. So we are already 25% behind where they said we should be right now. I know there's talk of waiting for another study. What it does, it goes back and says we need a 30% from where we are now. That's $27 a month per household. That is a lot. But we're at a point now where we have stuff coming. We have stuff that needs to be fixed and we don't want to fall behind. If we start falling behind and our reserves dip too low, we're gonna fall below, below that threshold where if we try to get bond for anything, we try to fix or get money for something, we're gonna pay more money in interest. We're gonna pay more money in fees. Um, we have stuff coming right now. I think we have a couple transformers, right? That we're gonna have to pay for. There's just, there's so much going on and we really did, we, we really wanted to go 10%, but it seems like a lot. It does seem like a lot, but we really do need it a lot. And I think Brian's answered everything else, so I'll just leave it at that and say thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate you. Thank you for speaking. Um, Councilmember Oaks.
Uh, okay, so actually I had a couple, do we have January numbers in? Do you have Brian or Dean? You know, the, we don't have January in yet.
We have not received the January bill yet, to my knowledge.
25th, okay. I was just curious. So, um, why aren't you asking for 10%? And so I say that because it almost seems like you're asking for five, but then at a near future date, we're gonna be asking potentially for more. Why not the bigger ask upfront and, and not come back? No, I'm just saying, you know?
Uh, to be, to be straight up honest with you, um, when, when Power, the Power Commission, uh, mentioned 10, I told them I would love 10, but I don't think the city council will go for 10. And that was my true honest, from the feedback I've got, from the comments I've heard.
No.
It was such a large jump, uh, at this time with as much unknown to what the future will entail and will bring. We felt that 5% would, uh, would, would help us maintain enough. Well, we, we'll, we'll still have to dip into our reserves, but not as drastically and not at such a large measure that we didn't feel that we couldn't maintain it and still be in an appropriate location and place. But if you do want my honest and full opinion, I think 10% would be a lot more accurate of a maintenance number to what we would need to see at this time to put us in a, in a place that would be, be a lot more, um, competitive to where we, we would need to be, um, in the future.
Okay, and if I follow on, my follow-on ends up being because my concern is, you know, you, you outlined a few months ago, you know, your five, the five-year plan and what you have envisioned and what, and that we're in a good place going down that five-year plan for what needs to be replaced in, in those projects. My concern is that as you dip into reserves, all of a sudden you're not in a good place to be able to accomplish what we know needs to be accomplished.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a, that's a huge concern. And that's probably the biggest reason why I think 10% would be the most advantageous thing to do.
Okay. And because I, yeah, I, I can fully understand where you're coming from because you've heard probably every member up here saying, we're, we're not for raising, you know, raising rates, especially at a difficult time. And yet, do we put ourselves in a untenable position down the road by not addressing a problem? And, uh, and we might be negligent as a council if we didn't do that. That's my comment. So, okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have. All right. Thanks, Brian.
Mayor, could I just address that real quickly? Because of the way this has been noticed though, uh, it's been noticed at the 5%, so we, we probably can't go to 10% tonight. We'd probably have to come back again for another five. The reason why is people might have looked at that and thought, oh, I'm fine with a 5%. So you could do something lower than five, but because of noticing, we would probably need to put it on another agenda if you're open to 10.
Okay.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you for that. Um, are we ready for a motion? Oh, oh, Councilmember Jackson, go ahead.
So, okay, just clarification on a few things. Um, you know, as we've kind of gone through this, I haven't felt comfortable raising the rates and it's based on, you know, back in, when was the last time? 20, was it 2016 or?
We had a, a raise, a rate raise in 2016, but then also in 2019, we did a summer rate change that, that can be also considered as a rate.
Do you recall how much money we had in the power fund at that time?
I have.
Just ballpark, okay.
I was a fourth year president.
Okay. I know, I know the power department, um, did not have a good rainy day fund and back, you know, many, many years ago. It's been mentioned that the power department wants six months of operating funds and that would be at about 9.7 million or somewhere around there. And then we have 11, is it 11, 2 or somewhere around there, million right now. And as I look at this, I understand that power, you really have to think long-term. And absolutely, if we have these $2 million transformers or whatnot that we need to purchase, I mean, that's a big deal. I understand that those, those will be purchased over a few years. And I just can't help but wonder, we have built up that fund so well that this point in time with the war in Ukraine, with, um, inflation and everything else, plus Nebo being down and the Pacific Corp Hunter being down, but now they're back up. That this is the point in time to kind of dip into some of those funds. And I, I'm under the impression that let's wait another two months and just kind of see some of the numbers, January and February and start looking at it that way. I'm not necessarily opposed to an increase, but last time we spoke, well, not last time, I think it was like last year sometime. I think the question was asked, do you have as much work as you can handle and are we in a good position? And the answer was yes, but of course lots changed since then. And, um, so I guess my statement and question would be, yeah, can you talk to that healthy amount? 11 plus million dollars that we have. And then also, um, if we do increase, I mean, do you have the manpower and the capability to really increase what you're already doing? Does that make sense? Cause I, I thought we were in a pretty good, um, robust plan, five-year plan moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, we, we definitely have a, a plan moving forward and, uh, and that's a concern. We, we don't want to stray from that plan because they're all things that, uh, have, have become more of a necessity that, that we accomplish and we, we maintain those things to keep from future hazards. Currently we have 9.2, um, in our reserve. Uh, recommended is 9.8. And then we do have just about, uh, just over 2 million, I believe it is, in our power purchasing reserve. That's not necessarily, there, there are two different things. Uh, we do have accessible that, that amount, but they are, they are two separate, uh, funds. One is, one is more for, uh, insurance for, for the purchasing of power when we need to dip into it with UAMPS. So, and so, you know, I, like I said before, if you take away the unique dynamics of, of the two months from when Nebo was down, we don't even have those months in the, in, into the plan. We're still short enough where 5%, you know, we, we will be dipping into our reserves. Uh, I, I don't believe for a minute we won't be, especially once things. I don't believe for a minute we won't be, especially once things start heating up, air conditioners start turning on, people, demand is high, and everybody's going to be in search of power because resources are diminishing. So even at 5%, I think we're going to be dipping into our reserves to some extent, especially when the seven months hit. So I agree with you. We've done a great job. Our staff, Dean, our fans department has done a fantastic job of preparing for this moment. But we also don't want to completely deplete the years and years and years of preparation for us to be prepared for this moment. And, and so that's, that's a worry and a fear of ours. 5% I think is, is going to be able to allow us to not go too deep into those reserves. So it's, I mean, we can't, we can't read the future. We don't know what it's going to bring. But, but what I can bring to the table is the opinions of years and years and years of experience. You know, we've got Alan Farnes here behind us. We have tons of experience throughout UAMs, many other cities. Lehigh City just barely implemented 18% with the intentions, and it's, it's done, so built 18%, and they have intentions of 18 to 22 more percent later this year. You know, Kaseville's in a lot better place than that. We aren't going to need to do that kind of an increase. That would be absurd. That would be ridiculous, unless something absolutely goes awry, and I hate to see what the world is.
Well, and to your, to your question of, you know, where were our reserves several years ago, they were, maybe we had less reserves, but the costs have increased so dramatically. And that's the thing that really concerns me. And, and I really appreciate the job that we're all doing as a council, trying to be as conservative and responsible as possible, but honestly, if we don't approve a rate increase, I think we're being negligent in our duties. None of us want to be able to tell people, look, we're going to increase your rates, but at the same time, I don't want to tell people, your lights aren't going to work. I'm sorry, we can't get a transformer fixed, and now we have a catastrophe. So I do think it's to the point that we need to be responsible, and, and we need to be brave, and we need to do this. And we'll probably have to do it again moving forward, but I would much rather do it incrementally and just be honest and upfront with people. These are the costs. Things are expensive, and right now, we're at a situation where we have to make decisions, and that's what they've entrusted us to do. And so I would hope that as a council, we would be able to, to make the hard decisions and to do this. And because I, I think that's being more responsible to our community, to be able to just tell them the truth. This is, this is how it is. And, and we want to try to be as responsible with everything else as we can, but I think that that's, that's what we should do. So that's my opinion, and I know you all have yours.
I, yeah, I do have an opinion, and I have some things, you know, and I tell you all, I'm cheap to a fault. There's no question. I mean, I've had to live on a budget my whole life. I've learned I can't go over my budget. I can't do that, because I don't, I just can't go to the neighbor and ask them for money to make my budget. But I've tried to get some numbers. I've tried to look at this. I'm not one person that's going to jump. We had a couple of bad months. I'm not going to jump. So I asked for some numbers. Now, I understand, Dean and Levi will verify, but I did get these numbers from them the best I could. They're not going to have everything in them. But yes, according to what they're saying, we've lost about $551,000 in the last six months. But the prior six months to that, we made 1.2 million. So over the year, we're, you know, as I, I hate to do math in public, but we're somewhere around 700,000 in the green and not in the red. So I tend to not jump when something happens like this. And we have built our reserves up from what we started at about 2 million to 9.5 million With this increase, even though it's small, we'll be the highest paid, we'll be paying the highest kilowatt per hour rate out of Davis County, because the only other independent I know of is Bountiful. And Bountiful, based on the information you gave us about a couple of months ago, they're at, they're steady across the board at 9.2 cents per kilowatt. And it doesn't matter whether it's the first 400 KW or whatever. Rocky Mountain Power, they fluctuate with winter and summer. We're pretty, in the summer, our first thousands, the same as their first 400, then they go up to 11 cents, but with this increase, we'll go up to a little over 12 cents. So we'll be about 1 cent above Rocky Mountain Power. And I always said, there's benefits to owning your own power company. It used to be a huge benefit when we could take the money and put it into parks and do things like that, which Bountiful, you know, I don't know how they keep their rates at 9.92 cents per kilowatt and take 10% of it and give to your general fund every month. All I can say is, good job, you know? I don't know where Rocky Mountain buys their power. I don't know if they buy it for a lot cheaper than what we buy it for, but even you have said, you don't know what's, we don't know what the future is, we don't know how much more it's going to be as a council. We don't know what our budgets are going to be this year. We don't know how big of a tax increase we'll probably be looking at. We were hoping to use some of this money, but I know there's no way I'm going to get two more votes on this council to do that anymore. And, and so I'm just not ready to jump. I'm, I'm ready to look back. I'm, I'm saying, you know, we've lost some money in the last couple of months. We've had some really strange months, an anomaly of some really high costs. But if I look at the year, we've done okay. Now, and as I look at this, the increase of 5% is going to roughly bring you about 600,000 a month in residential, I mean, 600,000 a year, about 50,000 a month. It's not going to put a big dent in when you're a million over in a month. So as you said, we also want to look at fluctuating rate structures. So all I'm saying is, let's look at all that. Let's figure it out. Let's figure out exactly what it is. If it's 5% is not right, and it has to be more than that, then let's just do it and do it once. And I'm only going off numbers I've got from other people, so I'm just not ready to jump. I'm not ready to panic, I guess. Yeah, go ahead, Bruce. I need, information's golden.
Question on the rates compared to Rocky Mountain Power? Even at 5%, we're looking at 1,000 kilowatt hours, it'll still be 4% lower on the winter rates. Summer rates will be 17% lower still, even with 5%.
How, how do you do that? Because I, because, because their Rocky Mountain Power shows on, this is residential, I'm not going, I don't have commercial. It says on their winter rates, for the first 400, they're 7.9, 7.9 cents for the first 400, and then in their summer, they go to 9 cents for the first 400. Kaseville does 8 cents for the first 1,000, and then we go to 8 for the first 1,000, then we go to 11 cents in the summer.
That's what I'm talking about, to 1,000 kilowatt hours, because they.
Yeah. But as you.
Lessening for the first.
I, I get that. I get that. But as I look at, and I looked at my graph of my house today, and I looked at, because it's just me and my wife, and so I looked at another graph of somebody else who has five kids or whatever in a household.
Xbox is going all the time.
And, and they're, they're the same. I mean, my house, I use less than 500, I use about 500 kilowatts per month until it comes July, August, and September. It goes up to 1,500. I use 200% more. And as I looked at his, his was exactly the same. So the costs come in those summer months. And so, yeah, I agree with you. We are probably a little higher through the, that's why I like Bountiful so well, it's just, that's what it is all year long, and that.
And the rate increase also.
And they probably will. But is it equal to, higher than? And that's what I say. I, I'm just not ready to jump.
So.
Go ahead, Councilmember Adams.
And I have to go to the bathroom really bad, so if we, if we don't make a break here in a few seconds.
Exactly.
So maybe I'll make a motion, but did we take a bathroom break? But I just have to say, the way that my Kaseville utility bill is set up is on equal pay, right? So it's the same, so it's the same price all year round. Why don't we do that? Why, why don't we take, I guess, my question is why we haven't done that in the past, or why we don't do that in the future, where we take what a year's worth of the previous year, and then use that calculation for the next year, and do that every year? So maybe, maybe rates go down one year, maybe they go, you know? I guess I'm curious why, why we don't follow that structure. Seems like it's smarter, but maybe there's negative to that.
You know, I, that's all stuff I'm going to have to look into. I'm, right now, I'm open to all those different.
Does that make sense to do it that way at all?
I personally, on equal pay with Rocky Mountain Power. And it goes up some years and goes down other years. This year, it's going to go up. It will.
Yeah.
Not because my usage went up.
No. But, but are they, but are, but I guess that's what I'm questioning, and I don't expect you to know how Rocky Mountain Power does it, but do they, do they do it that way? Do they analyze how much they're paying for it over the course of the year, and then that's how much they charge you on their rates?
I'm not sure how they calculate that.
Interesting, okay.
That's something I have to ask them into, and find out how that calculation goes into play. But, but I, one, one other factor that we need to take into consideration, actually two, two factors, is someone like Bountiful, they can do, they can do peak shaving and different things. They have, they have a lot of generation. We don't have any generation. And so that's something we have going against us, that people like Prolo, Lehigh, Murray, Bountiful, Hyrum, there's lots of, lots of places that have their own means of generation, and, and they're able to do. And that's something that we're also looking into, trying to find if it would be effective for Kaseville to create our own generation. Unfortunately, we don't have a transmission loop, so it makes it difficult for us to make that be, be effective, because we would be limited to one small substation in which we'd be able to source that generation out from instead of the whole city. So, and then the other, the other thing to take into consideration, Alan Quigley actually mentioned it as well, is that, you know, if we end out needing to dip into reserves and we go too low, we've now lost our ability to bond. We will be required to have a minimum amount of reserves and maintain a minimum amount of reserves, reserves in order to be able to do bonding if, if there is a need for it, for a generation, for a building, for whatever there might be in the future. So that's something to take, to take into consideration as well. And so, and I do, I do totally understand, you know, your hesitation to jump, and I respect that. I'm, I'm pretty cheap myself. I come from a family where, you know, 10 kids raise on teacher's salary, so I was raised that way. But, but I also, I also feel that there is a, there is a need, and there's a, there's a, a level of stress and crisis that, that will definitely elevate inside me without it, but, but, you know, we'll do, we'll do what we have to do, and we'll move forward in whatever manner we have to. But it does, it does make me worry. I was looking at, I was looking at things here and the way things work out with Rocky Mountain Power, and even with our 5% increase, you know, just, just running through my head, how, how they structured theirs with the first 400, and then they jump up. So from 400 kilowatt hours to the 1,000, they would be higher than us during that timeframe. So it would, even with a 5% increase, it would, I think, I feel it would equal out, it would be pretty, pretty comparable still to even them. So it's, it's, I don't know, it's, it's a hard decision to make. I'm hoping that I can present it in a way that you guys can make the most educated and appropriate decision for the city and for its residents. It is, we are in an alarming and concerning state right now as an industry. I had, oh, is it Alan Johnson? It is? I was just thinking of him as well. So many Alans. I had Alan Johnson came up, come up to me about two months ago from Bountiful, UAM's meeting. He asked me how I was doing. He's a Kaseville resident as well. I said, I'm doing, I'm doing well. He says, how you holding up? I says, well, I'm learning. I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to figure all this out. There's a lot to take in. And his response was, I've been doing this for 40-something years, he said.
45, yeah.
Forty-something years. He said, I've been doing this for 40-something years, and I'm, I'm now learning too. And he says, we are, we are approaching things that I never imagined I would ever see in my career, and I'm dealing and having to make decisions and do things that I never, I've never had to deal and deal with in my 40-something years of experience in this industry. And he says, and then he, and then he says, good luck.
Good luck.
You know? Good luck. And, and it just kind of shows where we are. We really are, we're seeing things that they've never seen before, situations we have to learn how to address and maintain and take care of. And so, you know, that, that is, that is very worrisome.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate you. I would, I, my, I, I think it's great to be responsible, it's great to be conservative, but we've been entrusted to make decisions that affect our entire city, not just us personally. And, and as we make good decisions, I think part of good governance is, is making decisions that are sometimes difficult. So really, you guys, I think that we're at the point, I mean, we've got Brian here, we've got Bruce here, we've got Alan, they know their business, and, and if they're coming to us saying that this is a critical thing, I think we need to take them seriously. That is why we hire them. That is, they're professionals. And, and it doesn't benefit them at all to, to, to ask for a rate increase. In fact, I know it gives you a bunch of angst, because no one likes to sit here and have to do that. And so I just, I hope that, I don't get a vote, obviously, but I would really advocate for us making a decision to increase rates. So that being said, I know some people.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
I, I make a motion that we approve a resolution amending Kaseville City's consolidated fee schedule for FY '23 to amend the power rates.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Blackham.
Nay.
Councilmember Jackson.
Nay.
Councilmember Hunt?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Seriously?
Yep.
I say aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you, council. Appreciate your hard work. Thank you, Brian. All right, councilmember reports.
I just want to appreciate, I want to say my appreciation to Brian, how he handles himself and how he comes before us and the information they give us. We don't always go your way or my way or whatever, but I still appreciate your professionalism. And I do appreciate the Power Commission. I do appreciate them coming to here. I just want them to know that. I mean, they never get to hear it. I do.
Yeah.
Obviously, you won't agree with me, but I do appreciate what you do. Thank you.
And I really appreciate the folks that showed up tonight. I mean, I know most of them left, but their decorum was outstanding in a, in a tough situation.
Oh, are you? Thank you. Have a fun trip. I hope you're going to do something great.
Can I make a motion that we adjourn?
Yes, you can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
I'm not going to bed for long.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, thank you. Have a good one.
Oh.